Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of our City Council for December 14th, 2015. If you will please stand, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Sloan.
Please join with me in saluting the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Masselevitz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sloan.
Here.
Mayor Deaton.
Here.
Councilmember Vera Papa.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Mrs. City Clerk, are there any changes?
I'd like to read into the record three additional items that were distributed after the posting of the agenda. This afternoon, we received a PowerPoint presentation from the Orange County Transportation Authority on the presentation regarding proposed 2016 bus service plan. We also received regarding item A, the detention center, from the Police Department, a PowerPoint presentation that was distributed and made available to the public. This evening, we also received an email from resident Robert Goldberg on that same item. Finally, on item L, capital improvement workshop, we received a PowerPoint presentation that was distributed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there, and is there anyone that would like to pull an item?
I would like to pull a couple items.
Okay.
I'd like to pull items B, as in boy, G as in George, H as in Harry, and K as in, K as in something.
G as in George, H as in Harry.
And K.
And K.
Yeah, and I'd also like to ask, since there was no package associated with item L, will the public be allowed to speak after we have a presentation? That's the capital, update on the capital projects.
No, if they have comments, I would like them, please, during oral communication.
But we haven't had a presentation. Then I would suggest we continue this item to the next council meeting so that the public, as well as myself, have an opportunity to review this. It wasn't provided with the package, and there hasn't been 72 hours' notice on this package, so...
Well, I think the idea is that we're going to get the presentation, all of us together tonight. And this is a presentation for the council. We certainly will be readdressing all of these issues as we go along. What is the pleasure of the council? I think the staff is prepared to educate all of us tonight.
It would be nice to have those type of presentations in advance.
I'd like to hear the presentation this evening. Is there an action that we need to take on this and adopt it and accept it, right?
It's a receive and file, but I think that we're also going to be looking at the peer as far as prioritizing what it is we want to do with the peer as a result of just looking at what our overall capital improvement plan is.
Then that needs to be agendized.
Okay, just a moment.
Well, I think in light of that, I would like to see the presentation made this evening and then put it on the next agenda as well, in case there are comments from the public that we need to address in the CIP.
Okay, so I think we need to vote on that, so we have a comment on the floor. Are we all in agreement that we're going to listen to the presentation tonight, but take no action on how we want to prioritize?
I'd second Councilmember Masselevitz's proposal.
Okay, that's 5-0 to hear the item tonight and then ask for the prioritization of items in January, when, after we've had the presentation tonight, and time to digest it.
Thank you.
All right? Okay.
I have a couple of items to pull.
Yes.
F, which is the submittal of yearly expenditure report to Orange County Transportation Authority for Measure 2 eligibility. I have questions about Measure 2, M2. I would appreciate the OCTA staff remaining until this is discussed. I know that you're just getting a presentation and you think you can leave quickly, but I'd like you to stay.
Can we...
The other, the other item is J, the West County Connector Project post-construction freeway noise study. I'd like that pulled as well. That's all.
Okay, I'd like to remind the attorney that at 11 o'clock, we need to make a decision as to whether or not we're going to continue.
Could we, could we move item F up so the people from OCTA don't have to stay?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
You want that right after oral communications?
That would be nice.
Okay. Any other? Come on, guys, there are only four left. Somebody must want to pull something. All right, so with that, we are going to pull B, F, G, H, J, and K, and we are going to move F to right after oral communications. So do we vote on that, Mr. Attorney, or is that just...
Yes, there's, you would need to vote to approve the agenda with those amendments.
With those items changed, okay. Then I have a motion.
So move...
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, that's 5-0 to approve the agenda as amended. All right, at this time, we're going to continue with presentations and recognitions, and we're going to begin with the Seal Beach Centennial Committee, so I'll be coming down. Thanks.
Like this?
Yeah, these are mine.
Good evening. We've had a wonderful year of this great centennial, and this full room shows us why. There are a lot of people that have worked really hard to pull this off. Thank you to each and every one of you. I'd like to begin, please, with the celebrations committee and ask Mr. Mark Lopesco to please come forward. Mark, thank you for all you did. I know you've heard it many times, but the fireworks were truly spectacular.
Thank you.
Would the following people please come forward? Barbara Wright, B. Keebler, Scott Newton, and Shelley Sastarsik. All of these people worked with Mark on the celebrations committee. Why don't you stand up here and we'll get a picture? Anyone else here? No? Okay, we'll take the picture. All right, now we're going to move on to the merchandise committee, and if Carla Watson would please come forward as the chair of the merchandise, co-chair with Nancy Criddell. Is Nancy here?
I don't think she's there.
Okay, all right. And Perry Watson?
She's not here.
Shy Criddell, Twyla Carcut, Patty Biggerstaff, Elaine Lane, Rosario Mariets, Charmin Snow, Marcia Katz, and Ellen Katz. Oh, dear. I'm not sure, is this a chair and co-chair, or is this a chair?
Chair and co-chair.
Okay, Chair Scott, we're co-chair Laura Ellsworth. Please come forward. Okay, now, marketing. We have Seth Eker and Deb Machin as co-chairs, Christie Smith and David Ream. Is no one here from marketing? Okay, then we're going to move on to the last committee. We've been hoping that maybe the chair would be here, but the history committee, Michael Dobkins, is the chair. And then Larry Strather.
Yay, Larry.
Yay, Larry. And Robin Fort Linky, she's upstairs at the camera. And Libby Applegate, Marilyn Van Dyke, Margie Arthur, and Kathy Cunningham, please come forward. Okay, and now we have a presentation by the Orange County Transportation Authority, the proposed 2016 bus service plan. Oh, sorry, sir.
Good evening. I'm Kurt Brodkiewicz, OCTA's Planning Division, and happy to be here tonight. We're here to talk to you about our 2016 draft bus service plans. I have a quick presentation to give you tonight, and then joining me tonight is Gary Hewitt, who, if you have any more questions for us on a more detail, I'll ask Gary to stand up and help me as we move forward. So, next slide, please. So, as you know, OCTA has operated countywide bus service since the early '70s. What's happening of late is our bus ridership has dropped about 30% over the last few years. So we're seeing major changes throughout the county, throughout the region, throughout California, and nationwide as it relates to transit ridership. The 2016 bus service plan is intended to reverse the ridership decline by really concentrating service where we know there is high demand for it, and so we'll talk to you more about that in a second. Our goal is to increase ridership by 1.6 million hours over this, or boardings over the, over the life of the plan, which is about a three-year plan as it relates to ridership. Next slide, please. We know that if we improve travel time by transit, more people will ride it and they'll stay on the transit system longer. So we need to make some changes to the bus system to make it operate faster and offer more frequent service. Many of you probably don't ride transit because it's not convenient in terms of travel time, and you may have to wait too long to get a bus. So those are the two service improvements that we're looking at, make it run faster and more frequent, and by doing that, we'll keep people in the system longer as well as generate new riders. We can only do this within our existing resources, though. We don't have revenues to basically expand the bus system, that is, add to the budget, so we essentially have to look at doing things differently. Next slide, please. The overall initiative is entitled OC Bus 360, so think of that as our umbrella initiative, and it has several different components to it. Next slide. We have new buses that are rolling out on the street. We have new branding that goes with that, it's called OC Bus. We have mobile ticketing that will be rolling out, so with a smartphone or even a text-based plan on your phone, you'll be able to get real-time bus arrival and departure information. We have new bus service that's rolled out on Harbor Boulevard. We want to offer more frequent service. We're looking at our fare structure to make sure we're priced appropriately, and we have various promotions that are underway as part of the overall plan called OC Bus 360. Next slide. The 2016 bus service plan is really targeted at improving the bus system, so this is just one leg of the stool under the OC Bus 360 initiative. As part of this plan, we want to add new high-frequency routes, six of them, where we know we have demand. What we mean by peak frequency is 15 minutes between buses, so you basically can walk out and catch a bus on one of these lines. We have Bravo service, which is an express-type service on Harbor Boulevard. We want to add one of those new Bravo lines that would operate really on Westminster and connect into the Cal State Long Beach area as well. So that would be faster service on Westminster, 17th Street, all the way from Long Beach into the Santa Ana area. We have some other arterial express services that we would like to operate as well on Bolsa and First, and that's part of this initiative as well. The blue graphic on this map shows you where most of our demand is. 80% of the demand is in that kind of area on that blue band, and most of that is in central Santa Ana. That's where most of these frequency and travel time improvements will occur as well. Next slide. If these changes move forward, about 92% of our riders will basically see no change or see an improvement. There's also a group that's called category name there, sorry that dropped off. That particular group is, will still have service, but we'll see less frequent service, but they'll still have access to the system, and then 1 to 4% would need to look at another option. Next slide. In terms of some of those options, we're working through the public outreach process right now, and, but the overall plan is really intended to match capacity with demand. You've probably seen, we have empty buses running around parts of this county where we need to make some changes and get more people on them and fill those seats, so that's what this whole plan is about. Next slide. So we're out right now talking to the public. We will leave copies of this particular brochure with you. It shows our route-by-route changes that are proposed for implementation in 2016. There's a web survey available. It's also in the back of this plan so that folks can fill it out, give us their feedback on the route-by-route recommendations. We've just concluded four community meetings, but that's really just kind of the start of our process. We're also planning a public hearing for January 25th at OCTA offices in Orange to get formal public feedback on these changes. Folks can call our customer information center, as well as submit comment cards, and again, these are also on the buses, and we have really an extensive effort to reach out to folks. In terms of the city of Seal Beach, you are primarily served by Route 1 on PCH, Route 42, which serves this area and then goes up along Lincoln and terminates in Orange, and Route 60. There are really no major, but we consider major changes to those particular routes, or some minor frequency reductions, but for the most part, your local bus service will remain intact. We do have some express routes that we are suggesting changes to. We have a express service that goes to downtown LA and serves Seal Beach. We need to make some changes to that to really improve the travel time and increase ridership. We are getting some pushback from the riders on the particular change, so we do have an option that basically leaves that route alone in this area, so we're seeking public feedback on that particular route as well. It's Route 701. Route 211 is an express that runs from this area also into the Irvine area. We need to make some changes to that as well and get more riders on it. So that's really our overview for you tonight. We're really here to answer any questions you might have, and like I said, we will leave some of these behind, probably a packet of them, and we can make more available at a, for your city staff to have available for folks. And again, they are available on the bus, and we would encourage people to visit our website and give us feedback. After January 25th, we'll be back to our board, most likely in February, with some final recommendations, but I will say that implementation of that will, could be delayed based on what we hear through the public outreach process. That concludes my presentation. Mayor Deaton and members of the council, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Where is, where does Route 701...
Could you pull your mic down, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Route 701, where does it begin?
Route 701 starts at the Golden West Transportation Center in Huntington Beach.
And 211?
211 starts in the Irvine area, and I can't remember the, where it is in, if you give me just a second, I can look that up for you. 211 starts at Leisure World and goes down into the Irvine area.
So you're going to eliminate 211 at Leisure World?
Route 211 would no longer serve Leisure World under this proposal, and that's one reason why we're out for public feedback. We did go out with four public meetings, and we didn't hear from anyone as it related to that particular change. I think that's also due to the fact that we're not observing a lot of usage of Route 211 at the Leisure World area or in this particular area. So again, we need to really make some changes to improve that particular route and get more people on it. So our proposal right now is to really streamline the service to focus on the 405 quarter, so it would run from the Golden West Transportation Center on the 405 down into the Irvine area.
And how would people get from Leisure World to the Transportation Center? What bus goes there?
For that, I would have to call upon my coworker, Gary Hewitt, who could potentially explain that to you. If Gary's not, doesn't have the routing in his mind, we'd have to follow up with, get back to you on that one.
Okay, maybe he has an answer. Looks like he's confident.
Yes. Thank you. I do have the routing in my mind, so I answered this question just the other day. So they would take two routes, Route 60 out of Leisure World eastbound to Route 29 southbound on Beach that would connect to the Golden West Transportation Center.
So what now takes one bus, you got to take three.
Correct. Correct. It would take additional transfers. Right now, at Leisure World, most of the ridership on that route's on Route 60 anyways. Looking at some recent ridership information for that route, it looks like there's less than five boardings at Leisure World daily occurring on that part of the route.
It's not quite, I mean, it's more than that, but not much.
Right, so it's lower, so...
It's less than 10 probably a day.
Right, right. We were able to look at the ridership based on the fare box. We, every time someone gets on the bus, they either swipe a pass or pay a fare, and we're able to go back and look at that data to see what the ridership trends look like over time.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask a question. On 211, how many buses do we have a day? Could we cut the frequency and increase the ridership so there would still be service on express, or express route that way?
Councilmember Miller, there's three trips in the morning and four trips in the afternoon, so that is a possibility, although, you know, given the low usage, I will just say west of Golden West Transportation Center, there could also be, we could lose ridership by cutting trips as well, so we'd have to carefully evaluate that particular proposal.
I was just wondering, because it seems like, you know, the problems we have at Leisure World, you have people that can no longer drive and/or can no longer physically be able to drive, and I'm wondering, you know, I don't, it sounds like the other bus trip, if time-wise, would be significantly more, although we don't know that yet.
Well, taking three buses instead of one...
Two.
Significantly...
Oh, yeah, you're right, three.
Increases the time it takes to get to your doctor's appointment in Irvine, or to go see your kid, or to go shopping.
So what are our options for input?
Obviously, tonight is key to feedback as well. We would encourage any residents that have concerns to go to our website, it's up here, and fill out the survey. Also, if you call 714-636-RIDE, those comments are also rolling in as well, and so we have literally hundreds of comments already, and so we would encourage residents, as well as City Council members, to, you know, let us know what you'd like to see. I did also want to say there is a big improvement as part of this plan. It's to this new Route 560, which will be express service from Long Beach into Santa Ana. How we're paying for that is basically kind of reallocating. How we're paying for that is basically kind of reallocating service. So even the Two-Eleven change is helping pay for this Route Five-Sixty change. So not completely, but there is a, there is a kind of a trade-off. We do have a limited budget to work with, and essentially, this plan is shifting resources around to, to make the system better and more convenient.
And how much does the input weigh in your decision? Obviously, it's a financial and a logistics plan that you're trying to do, so how much does the input that, say, less than ten people riding a bus a day have when you weigh what you're trying to do?
We're out talking to the public, and we take seriously every comment we get in. We don't claim to know everything about every bus stop and bus trip throughout the county. We have literally, you know, over six thousand bus stops. We have thousands of bus trips. We have millions of passengers every year, so we rely on customer input to make these changes. So it will be very important. There is a financial aspect to this as well. I think our fear as staff is if we don't make some changes to the bus system to really grow ridership, that we may have to make deeper cuts in the future because of the ridership decline will continue, and we'll have a lower base to build from, and, you know. So we feel there's some urgency to move forward with bus system changes in 2016. But whether, you know, these particular route-by-route changes are the appropriate ones or not, that's really why we're here talking to you.
When do you want to implement these changes?
The current plan calls for two phases of implementation. The first one would be in June of 2016, and the second one would be in October of 2016. The schedule may change based on what we hear from the public as part of this process. And frankly, we already realize there are some changes that are in the plan that will have to, have to be made. We've got a lot of good public feedback, and like I said, we will amend the plan based on that feedback.
Okay. Any other questions?
I've got a couple. The, the, there's ten people total on all the bus service one direction a day, right? It's not ten per, per bus, it's ten total?
I believe the number that Mr. Hewitt quoted was a daily boarding number, right?
Okay.
Yes.
The other question I have is, is there an opportunity to have a smaller bus with a new route just for that a couple times a day to get them over to that? There wouldn't be an express bus?
I don't know the answer to that. It's not in the plan right now. I would say that moving towards a smaller bus saves you capital, but the operating costs are about the same. So that would have to be weighed as part of the, the decision to do that.
And on Seven-O-One, as I've already suggested, that I like the option two. My question with regard, option two, they continue the routes through Sioux Beach that we currently have. They just cut back one northbound bus in the morning, if I remember correctly. I assume, first of all, you'll do a survey of the riders to see what hours work best if you're going to go down to two buses north at, in the morning?
I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Well, I thought we were going to go to two buses in the morning going into LA? An option two?
Yes, yes, we are talking to the riders.
Well, we do a survey of the riders to see what two times will work out best?
Yes, we will.
And the, the other question I have is, we have, one of our residents rides that bus occasionally, and he said that, he actually switched over to the, to the blue line because the bus was like twenty minutes later now going down the fifteen. Have you, have you ever thought of going down the ninety-one or the, up the four-oh-five?
Councilmember Miller, one of the changes that's proposed to Route Seven-O-One in downtown Los Angeles is to kind of streamline the routing there. That should save about fifteen minutes of travel time. So the, the second option I mentioned, which doesn't affect the route in the Orange County, would save about fifteen minutes in downtown LA. That's our second option, that's why we have that in there. In terms of actual freeway routing, we are looking at that right now, but I think what we have on our, our draft map is pretty good. Mayor, I had one more thing I wanted to mention, if you don't mind, and that is, we are also working with the local agencies on a Measure M2 Project V Call for Projects. It's a community circulator program. Applications are due February twenty-ninth. We have had a workshop with local agencies last week, so if you are interested in a local community circulator, OCTA is prepared to at least evaluate your particular proposal. So that is out on the street right now, and if you'd like more information that we can provide to city staff, we'd be happy to do that. In some cases, some cities are actually looking at this plan and considering that, well, if OCTA cuts back the service, I, the city may step in and basically apply for a Project V grant. The Project V program provides up to five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per year for seven years for this particular service. So it's quite a good deal. The match is ten percent, and the funds can be used for capital or operating.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
No, I have a question. Don't go. What's the philosophy of OCTA versus fixed rail rather than buses or combination of both?
Councilmember.
I notice that OCTA is pregnantly absent in fixed rail facilities.
Councilmember, OCTA operates over seventy bus routes throughout the county, and we also fund MetroLink commuter rail service between Oceanside LA and then parallel to the ninety-one corridor. We actually own the Los An Railroad, which is over fifty miles of rideaway in this county, so we're not absent on fixed rail. Our efforts right now, at least over the past twenty, twenty years, have focused on specifically commuter rail. However, we are now working with the city of Santa Ana and Garden Grove on the OC Streetcar Project. That east-west rail line will essentially run from the Santa Ana Transportation Center out to Harbor and Westminster. So the project is entering final design at this point, and we're seeking federal dollars for that particular project. So we are engaged in moving towards fixed rail in the future, and we'd be happy to give you an update at a future meeting on, on our whole kind of transit activities on our enderway throughout the county.
I took, when I was working, I took the blue line to South Pasadena, took three trains, and it only took me ten minutes longer than if I drove it after having to wait for three, three trains. But the convenience of it was great, and I didn't have to fight the freeway traffic. So I'm having a little trouble understanding why the philosophy of OCTA is not to install fixed rail facilities. And I guess it's rhetorical on my part, doesn't require an answer. Just a comment that it can be done. It's being done all around us. I don't know what your personal philosophy is, but it just doesn't seem logical to me that OCTA wouldn't be entertaining fixed rail or something similar to it. I think that's all I have. And I, could I mention to the city manager, if you would look into that grant, the five-hundred and whatever? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I personally think the fixed rail would be better than a carpool lane, but.
Oh, it is much better than the carpool lane.
Okay. That does it for presentations and recognitions. Did you still want OCTA to stay around?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, then. Now we're going to open oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. I see we have a customer already.
Hi, Carla Watson, sixteen thirty-five Catalina, and good evening, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody. Yeah, the merchandise committee is still going, raising money for Founder's Day. The goal and the purpose was not to raise a lot of money, actually. Since this was the hundredth anniversary, the goal was to make sure that everyone had access. So we tried to go to every community, College Park East, College Park West, The Hill, and of course, we were on the pier every Saturday and some Sundays from last November. I'll get back to my golf game next Saturday. At any rate, we still have some merchandise left. Some people wanted to give it up, but I, you know, I know how people felt about the bricks, so we took orders at the Sun, at City Hall, and on October twenty-fourth, and we're right now trying to fill those, and it's not going to be perfect. Right now, everybody wants hoodies, and there's no hoodies left. But just very quickly, for you and for the audience, we have a few. Someone said to me, it was a FedEx guy today I saw on the street. Boy, was it cold out there. He said, you probably could put that on eBay and sell it for a hundred dollars. If anybody wants this, this is a kid's large, and it is so cool. It's a hoodie. We also have a few hats left. We have fantastic cards that have six views on them, historical Seal Beach, only ten dollars. And then we have quite a few kids' t-shirts, large, medium, and small. And we have the bags, and last year, I put my kids' names on them so that they can put all their loot in the same bag. And they're pretty nice, and you can wash them. And last but not least. We have.
I know. You can all take one home.
No, it's, they're fifteen dollars, and they have the little logo on the seal. I know, this is shameless, isn't it? Okay. And, but, you know, you do what you have to do, and I don't have to go back on next Saturday. So sixteen thirty-five Catalina is where I live. That's where the last shop is. Five-six-two, five-nine-eight, nine-two-nine-four. One more time. Five-six-two, five-nine-eight, nine-two-nine-four, and then we will wind it up. But we wanted everybody to have a chance to have something. So, and thank you all for participating. Thank you for your leadership, Patrick, and thank you for buying merchandise.
It sounds like you might be able to sell all your seals tonight.
Tell me, are any of those blue glasses left?
You know what? I ordered some more. And I ordered fifty. I talked to the, they won't be here until January, but I only ordered fifty, so.
Save me seven?
Some, okay, I'll put you on the list. There's a few people ahead, but, yeah.
If that's too many, I'll take three.
No. Carla Watson at Verizon dot net. Could you email me that so I won't forget? Okay? Thanks. Bye. Oh, one more thing. I thought, one more thing.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I know he won't do this, but this is another great Christmas present, or Hanukkah present, and I'm giving it to my next-door neighbor's Adam Wright, well, he'll know now, but Adam Wright and Randy Wright, but it's the history of Seal Beach, and it's Larry Struthers, and he'll autograph it for you, and it makes a really, really nice present for somebody for Christmas. And so he would, he would, he doesn't even know I'm doing this, so, anyway. That's it.
Thank you for all you've done.
Honorable Mayor, city council, and staff, I've come here tonight because I'd like to talk to you about the Seal Beach Police Department. My perspective is that I'm on the Seal Beach Police Foundation Board. I also, in my profession, have an opportunity to interact with many law enforcement professionals. Over the years, I've dealt with LAPD, the sheriffs of both counties, out-of-state agencies, CHP, so I have an opportunity to speak with many law enforcement officers. And I want to tell you what a department we have. The, the acquisition of Chief Joe as our chief, I just cannot speak more highly of. His methodology and philosophy of policing is, is second to none. You know, I'm on the Chamber of Commerce as well. I see him at the seven-thirty breakfast, and I think to myself, I wouldn't be there if I didn't have to be. But he's there, you know? He doesn't have to be, but he is. July fourth, we, we have a block party. Who walks down the street? Chief Joe, Commander Mullins, and Sergeant Gonshak. And, I mean, they're on, they're out on July fourth, knowing they should be enjoying time with their families. It's a quiet day in the town, and I just want to tell you that I watch him, and I also am a big supporter of the Fourth Amendment and the Bill of Rights. I believe the Bill of Rights is crucial to our country, and there's a respect of the, of the Fourth Amendment with the department, but also a proactive department as well. And I just wanted to kudos to bringing him on and the way he, his officers, and the way the citizens are treated. And the fact that we have two homeless liaison officers in this city, a small city, yet we have that. And, you know, as, as part of the police foundation, one of the reasons I joined is because I knew we could bring funding to these officers. And that kind of thing, you just don't see elsewhere. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you very much. Doing a great job.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council and staff. I'm Rondi Winkler, president of the Golden Rain Foundation, and I'm here mainly to talk about the Orange County Transit Authority. First of all, we got a notice, and I don't know where the breakdown in communication was, but we learned about the citizen response on December, for December ninth, and again in Huntington Beach, on December tenth, on December ninth. We just can't respond that fast. We had to get to our transportation supervisor. I mean, it was, we just didn't understand what was going on. And we really need that kind of interaction. I also realized, listening to the two gentlemen today, that although we have nine thousand people in Leisure World, how many use the buses, we don't know. And as you know, all the buses inside Leisure World are not licensed for the street except for one, and that's an access bus for the handicap. So subsequently, if our people want to use, our residents want to use the bus, they need to take our bus to the, the transit center in Leisure World and then take the bus out. I do know that our transportation supervisor, Grant Winford, holds a meeting once a month that is extremely well-attended, that tells us not, tells new residents not only how to get around Leisure World, but how to take the OCTA buses. And that's important. So what maybe would, after listening to all this, would be important is possibly for OCTA to start to network with Leisure World and see if we can't increase the riding for that issue area. We're trying, our own fleet is fairly old. We will be buying some new buses this year, in two thousand and sixteen, in our budget. And when we do that, at least one or two of them will be licensed for the street because, as according to Tom Rowe at the Chamber, you would like to get more people downtown Monday through Thursday. I have people inside Leisure World, except for directors of the foundation, that don't do much all day. I mean, they're in a position to come into Main Street, and we want that. It's not our goal to have our population trapped within our walls because they can't get out, and it is difficult to drive into Seal Beach. So if we can put all this together and work with the transportation authority, I do have some cards they gave me, I'm going to give them to Grant. We can, see if we can't get better dialogue between us so that our population can use the bus and know how, how to use it. I don't, I'm always afraid if I get on, I can't get off, or even get back on to get home, so. And I was raised in an extremely small town that you could walk around in forty-five minutes, so never had to take a bus growing up. But I hope you understand our concern. We want to get our residents out, and we'd actually like to get more of them, possibly not driving, which is another little problem we have internally because they're our private streets, and sometimes people just forget to go down and get all this renewed, their driver's license. But I also want to thank you for this centennial celebration. We all enjoyed it. As you know, the bricks are in, and everybody was so pleased to see their name there. And that particular center where the bricks are is going to actually be sort of a social gathering, so more people will see it. gathering, so more people will see it. And so, I wish you all happy holidays. We have some parties and stuff going on in Leisure World. We do know how to party. So, anytime you'd like to join us, Sandra Masalavat will certainly make it possible. And thank you.
Thank you, Rondi.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Robert Goldberg, Seal Beach. I'd like to speak to Item K on the agenda tonight, which is the city's El Nino preparations. As the staff report explains, the city is renting seven pumps, been renting them since about October, and these seven pumps have been set up in five different locations around the city, two of them at the pier and four other locations. The staff report says that these five locations represent some of the, what are called sump areas, or low areas. And I'm here tonight to advocate for placement of another pump, one more pump, because there's one pump of the, of the seven we're renting, one of these pumps is being kept in reserve at the city yard. And I'm here tonight to ask that staff would set this pump up in Bridgeport, where I live, specifically on Corsair Way in Bridgeport. This is an area that I believe is at high risk of flooding. There has been at least two major storm drain improvement projects in the neighborhood, and staff may feel that those projects have eliminated the risk of flooding, but that's not the case. And what I've prepared and handed out to you is a chronology over the last 10 years of what's been happening in terms of improvements and flooding. Some of you may know that I was the chairman of the city's ad hoc storm drain committee in 2005, and that committee was put together after we had severe flooding in multiple areas of the city back in 2004 and 2005. In the fall of 2005, the first project in the area was to replace two catch basins on Corsair, and here's a map here. This is Corsair Avenue, this is Bridgeport, I know it's a little hard to see, this is Marina Drive, this is Marina Park, Fifth Street is over, is over here, PCH is up here. The first project that was done in 2005 was to directly try to deal with these areas here which are sumps. These purple stars are what's called, are the low areas of the sumps. One's right on Corsair, and the one's in the alleyway that connects by a pipe right there. And for the purpose of full disclosure, my house is right about here. My house has never flooded, but I am close to the ponding area here. So in 2005, the two catch basins here were replaced, they were made larger, and then this pipe on Corsair, which leads into the main trunk that heads west to the river and the pump station, the west end pump station, this was, this pipe was, was, was replaced with a larger pipe. So everyone in the neighborhood was very, very happy. The city jumped on that project, it was about $300,000. So we thought everything was fine until 2000, until January in 2010, when we had a downpour at that time, that only lasted a couple hours, but was sufficient to flood the street here. This turned into a huge pond here. There were three cars that were parked on the street there that were flooded and destroyed. No houses were flooded at that time, and I failed to mention that in 2004, we had numerous houses flooded in Corsair. So in 2010, we had three cars destroyed at that time. We actually, one of the neighbors that had their car destroyed had a professional engineering company come out and analyze, well, how much of a rain was it? Staff had said it was a flood of biblical proportions. An independent evaluation that was done from an engineering company indicated it was only a six-year storm. So, in 2013, this area was redone upon electric, and we thought, well, that'll help too. But just a year ago, in December of 14, we had another flood here. And I think what the problem is, is that this system here just wasn't engineered large enough. And so I believe we're still at very high risk of flooding. I would ask that you take the pump that's in reserve and put it here. This distance is about 300 feet from this area here to the main, the main trunk, and that would help a lot. If you can move the water here up into the main trunk, I think that will take care of the problem. We're spending $3,700 for that pump to sit in the yard, and it doesn't make any sense to me. So I would urge you to ask staff to deploy that for us. Thank you very much.
My name is Robert Elsner, and I'm the owner of 310 Corsair Way, and here to address some of the same issues that Robert just spoke of. I have been flooded, one of the houses that has been gone through a flood, and that's an experience that I would wish upon anyone. Six inches of water throughout the whole bottom floor of the house, and all the way back to the garage. And at the time, we thought the reason given to, the reason we thought we were flooded was the pumps were not turned on in a timely manner. City denied that, said that they were turned on, and not all of us believed that, but that's at least what we were led to believe, that it was an issue of the strength of the storm and the inadequacy of the drainage on Corsair. In 2010, I believe it, there was another near flood of my house. That afternoon was spent filling sandbags, loading them into the truck, strategically placing them around the house, and fortunately, that, that worked that time. So I'm here to request that this extra emergency flood device that is in storage now be placed on Corsair. There seems to be an area that Robert has pointed out is, continues to flood, and we have an El Nino condition projected for the future in the next few months here. And I know the owners of the homes on Corsair would be very, very disappointed if we hear that there is a pump in storage and our homes are flooded again. Thank you very much.
Joyce Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. And Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. And I'm impressed with the Old Town residents and the Hill residents with their lights, their Christmas lights. It's incredible. It's wonderful to see. This is America, we have freedom of speech, and I'm here to talk. So, it was about a year ago that my dear letter came, Dear Letter. And it was, not until, I think, January of last year, I wrote it down, Mayor Deaton, when you said that you approved the Dear Letter with the money that went to send it out. What was it, $66,000 at the time? Because I've been talking about transparency in government for a long time, and I suggested that the city manager resign and pay the money back. Wasn't her money to have a Dear Letter sent to me? A lot of people threw the Dear Letters away because we had a big vote coming that year. So people just threw them away. I kept mine. I intend to do something with it. So I suggested that she, since she has no transparency about what she's doing, resign, give us the money back. People laughed at me. But there are things happening now in town that are not really good money spent to help the residents. The money spent for that dirt that came in to the beach, the money spent for that old shack to come over here, the money spent for down there on our beach. You didn't have coastal approval, you didn't have anybody to vote to take the park away from us. You took the park away from us to put a memorial down on the park. For whom? And here, he's still in jail. It happened over there, not on the park, the place that we used to go, people used to go. It's disgusting that you, we had to spend money on that, we had to spend money on the shack. Nobody came forward to give the money, the money. And here I was begging for the alley to be done, for how many years? Three years? Oh, it's supposed to get done in 2016. Well, I looked at that, and it was only about $30,000. The money that she spent on a $700 lawyer could have, could have done that alley over there for the residents with potholes. You ever run across a pothole in your alley, Mayor Deaton? Come on. You're the mayor, you're supposed to be helping the taxpayers, not the city manager. I want her to resign, and I'm close to going forward with a lot of other things. And to put this document out and not tell us that we had a right, California Code 9295, to object to this, we had a right. You don't want anybody to know anything. So here we are, we have, we have no right to vote now for a city clerk, and we have two. Can you explain to me why we have two city clerks getting paid? We had a good city clerk. She gave up some of her money so that the computer could be, the computer could be added with some of her funds. She was never given a party, she was told to stay out of the meetings. You locked the door on her. I still want to know why you locked the door on her. I want to know if you got the $50,000 to give to your friend, the consultant. I want to know. And if the El Nino comes, with that pier sitting out there at the very end wrecked up, it's going to be unbelievable for Seal Way. I've told all my friends down there, get plywood and put it up everywhere you can, because when that sand comes, and when that ocean comes with the wind, it doesn't care where you are, that berm will be down. So, I...
Time.
Time. Thank you, Councilwoman Sloane.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing the oral communications, and now we will go on to, I think what I'll do is, we'll vote on the consent calendar, and then we'll go to Item F. All right? So do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar, or what remains on it? That would be Item C, D, E, and I.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote. Okay, that's 5-0 to accept the consent calendar. I see that I'm a little out of order here. So what I'm going to do, because I've been trying to get to F, I would like to go back and get the city attorney report.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting this evening, the council met and closed session regarding the two items on the posted agenda. All council members were present. The council gave direction to staff and took no reportable action.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I have just one item tonight. Want to wish the council, the community, and our staff a happy holiday season and a happy and healthy New Year. And just a reminder, I know we've done several forms of public outreach on our annual holiday closure, which this year is between Monday, December 21st, through Friday, January 1st. The office is back open on Monday, January 4th. Of course, emergency services, such as our police department and marine safety services, will not be, will not be affected in addition to our maintenance crews that will be on standby in the event of an emergency. Trash collection, street sweeping, and building department, open hours for building inspection are also on, up on the website for the public. So just want to make sure that's clear, and look forward to working with you in the new year. So thank you.
Thank you. Council comments? Councilmember Miller?
No.
Councilmember Masalavat?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Sloane?
Yes, I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and enjoy, enjoy, enjoy.
And Councilman Verapapa?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's been a month since we met last time, and I just want to mention that I went to the Thanksgiving dinner at St. Anne's, and the tree lighting festivities over at the pier, and the Christmas parade, and breakfast with Santa, and it was all really well-done. I really appreciate all the help by the volunteers, the staff, Chamber, the residents, Lions, everyone did a great job. Also, the Centennial, Centennial year was fantastic. My family and I truly enjoyed every event and made the best of it. Thank you all.
Thank you. And I too wish to wish you not just a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, but a very, very good New Year. May 2016 be your best yet. And with that, we will now move on to the, I'm going to move A behind F, if you don't mind, because we were going to do that right after oral communications. All right? So we will go to F, the Submittal of the Yearly Expenditure Report to Orange County Transportation Authority for Measure M2 Eligibility. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Our Deputy Public Works Director, Michael Ho, will present this item tonight. Michael?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Once again, this item is for the OCTA Submittal, for the annual expenditures, for the eligibility for Measure M2. This is an annual expenditure report that summarizes Measure M2 funds, which project it's going to, and how we spent the funds that we submit annually to comply with Measure M2 dollars. Page two of the staff report has items 1 through 8 that the city maintains and completes all 1 through 8 to be eligible for Measure M2 funds. This report and an attachment shows the expenditures that we spent for projects throughout the year for fiscal year 1415. And tonight's resolution is the submittal of this expenditure package, which the Director of Finance has signed and approved. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This was pulled by Councilmember Masalavat. Sandra?
I have a question about M2 funds. I remember voting on it, but I don't remember exactly the wording of it. Wasn't there something in the M2 funds about it not being used on toll roads, to build toll roads? Is this true?
You may, you may approach. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurt Brodkey, OCTA. There's nothing in the ordinance that prevents that. What's in the ordinance is a program of projects that we committed funding to and for. So some of those projects include essentially a formula, turn back to local agencies for some of the expenditures that were just mentioned. Some of it is competitive streets and roads funding, you apply for grants and can get those. Some are competitive transit projects as well, like the Project V call for projects that we're out on right now, and others are actual freeway improvements, for example, the widening of State Route 57, State Route 91, I-405, et cetera. But no, there's nothing in the ordinance that would preclude that. But again, by policy, we want to deliver the commitments that we've made to the voters, and that includes a specific scope of work on each, essentially, project. And for the programs, of course, we're fulfilling those requirements through calls for projects and the like.
Is there, I'm kind of late at this, coming into this M2 stuff. Can, is there anything I can access on your webpage that talks about M2?
Yes. We'd be happy to provide a link to city staff, and then they can forward that to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, anything else?
No, I move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Please vote.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, that's 5-0 to approve. We're now going to move on to Council... We are now going to move on to council items number A, the Seal Beach Detention Center report. City manager, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, we do. Thank you. And our Police Chief, Joe Stillenovich, along with some of his support staff will be presenting this item tonight. Chief?
Thank you.
Good evening. Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Let's talk jail.
[laughing]
So with me here tonight is our jail supervisor, Sergeant Steve Bowles, who runs the day-to-day operation and has a lot to do with the innovation, innovative practices you'll hear about this evening. Also is newly promoted Commander Joe Miller over the support bureau. Joe, if you could stand up for me. And over operations, my admin sergeant, who is acting commander of operations, Sergeant Phil Gonshak. Thank you for coming. Well, this isn't fair. I don't think we clap for Steve, so. Steve Bowles. We're going to start with a brief history of the jail. Our jail was built along with the police department in 1974. It was originally built to be a 30-bed facility and if you look at it, we do have 30 beds in it. However, it was remodeled in 2007. And when they conducted a remodel, we had to get re-accredited by the state and the state enacted some new restrictions on us because the state and federal are not in alignment with the amount of square footage of living space needed per prisoner. So when we enact the new state laws, it becomes an 18-bed facility. So our primary function is to serve local and state inmates and we take on the federals as a revenue stream. So, but when we have one state person in there, it's an 18-bed facility. And I know that was contentious around 2007 and the discovery of that, but it is the reality we deal with. In the 1990s, we outsourced operations of jail to a company called CSI. Now, they came in and ran our jail all the way up to 2007. After the remodel, the city took the position of they didn't want to hire a company to run their jail anymore and incur that cost. They preferred to go to a pure landlord-tenant system with CSI and CSI said, we're not interested in that. So in 2007, the decision was made to hire our own professional staff to man the jail. And that staffing model is one supervisor at the time, a civilian, and six jailers. Currently in 2007, we made physical improvements, over $100,000 to the jail. There we go. Over $100,000 in physical improvements. That's new paints, new locks, new features. We went through accreditation post with, through state and federal and we had the recruitment and selection of the staff we had mentioned earlier. Our current staffing model, we're budgeted for six full-time CSOs, our jailers. Currently, we have five and one sworn supervisor, who is Sergeant Steve Bowles. The booking process is the main reason we have the jail and we'll get into other benefits for us, but here's how it works now. You have your officers out on the street. They find a bad guy, they arrest him. They come to the jail, which is centrally located in Seal Beach. They turn him over to the jailers and the jailers handle the booking process of that individual. Now, that saves us a lot of time and we'll get into the details in hours in a little bit, but simple street line where it gets the officer back out on the street so it does not impact service to the residents of Seal Beach. So why do we need a detention center? If you look, Seal Beach is approximately 11.2 square miles and in Seal Beach Patrol, we utilize a minimum staffing model. Now, I'm not going to just mention how many officers that is due to officer safety and community safety reasons, but no, we're very, very lean. If an officer were to have to come out of the jail and book his own prisoner or transport a prisoner or any other thing, it would greatly inhibit my ability to provide service in a timely fashion to the residents of Seal Beach. So the few cops we do have, I need them back on the street as soon as possible. So why do we need them on the street? Because anywhere in Seal Beach, if I get a priority warrant, one call, the Seal Beach Police Department's right now, our goal and our accomplishment is to get back to that person who called between three and three and a half minutes. It's remarkable fast response time. But priority one calls are the ones where it's a nine-one-one and hang up, we don't know what the trouble is, or it's something that lights threatening our crime in progress. So that's a remarkably fast response time your police departments gives to you and serves the community with. If we were to take those officers off the street and close their jail and they'd have to book and process their own prisoners, it would greatly impact that. So prior to opening our jail here, we booked it, the Orange County Jail. So last year, we had over 130 transports to the Orange County Jail. If we book a felony suspect here, we come in, we book them, we have to process them, whether it's a jailer doing it or a police officer, but felonies we do not hold. They are then transported, they either make bail or transported to county where they're held for their arraignment. Now misdemeanors are different. Misdemeanors, for the most part, will bring in, process, book, and then cite and release. And we'll get into alcohol related for less a little bit later because they're a little different. So the booking and transport to Orange County Jail can be anywhere between three and 12 hours, depending if there's a medical condition. It's also, we might have to transport a parolee as far away as Chino State Prison if the county refuses to take them. And also, the juvenile facility is located close to the Orange County Jail, so the transport and processes of those would be very similar, but that occurred in 130 of our arrests last year. So when the officer does this transport themselves, it takes them out of the street for obviously some considerable amount of time away from our community. However, when we have a jailer that is able to book and transport, the officers are back on the street, serving the public immediately. So what are our detention center goals? Well, we want to be fiscally responsible and this year, we are approximately 4% under budget and I believe we'll finish the year under budget. We have an ethical, well-trained staff. Our staff is very professional and very good at what they do. We also want a safe jail environment, but the most important thing is our jail enhances our patrol levels. We have more cops on the street because the jail is there to serve us. So some challenges we faced recently. We went after an ICE contract to book some federal prisoners and that never came to fruition. We once upon a time, a few years ago, used to have US Marshals prisoners, so fed, those are our federal inmates that I talked about. Well, the Marshals came to me and Sergeant Bowles and said, we found a jail in California City that will house them for considerably less than you'll do it. We used to get approximately $90 per prisoner per day from the feds and it was a good income. They found a place that would do it for closer to 50. Now, when I just have to start weighing in the risk of having those prisoners, the cost of food, the cost of nursing, the cost of all the things we supply to them, medicine if needed, it started to be not make sense for that low price. So we still have an open contract with the Marshals and the federal government, so in the event they need housing, they can come back to us and we have to stay up with getting still inspected by them and continuing a relationship even though we don't have any current prisoners. So thank you Sergeant Bowles for continuing with that. There's been a trend with judges with increased home confinement, so more people are saying you can be under house arrest with the GPS anklet. Now, that has ran through probation, the monitoring of that, and that might even be a business we'll look to get into in the, in the future, monitoring those contracts because we do have those capabilities. But currently, that is impacting us in a negative manner as judges put people in home as opposed to allowing them to go to jail and then opt for a pay-to-stay. And then finally, legislative and voter initiative changes. Prop 47 changed a lot of crimes that were felonies to misdemeanors. Therefore, many, many subjects are getting probation as opposed to jail time, which of course impacts our ability to get pay-to-stays. So the advantage of this, the jail, as I mentioned, really optimizes our patrol officers because it gets them back on the street in a, a quick manner. The second part, which is a little bit harder to understand, we, if we arrest somebody for an alcohol or narcotics-related offense, drunk in public, DUI, under the influence, what the penal code says we're arresting them for is because they're unable to care for themselves or others. So what does that mean to a custody setting? It means when we arrest someone for drunk in public or DUI, which are our most common, the county will not accept them because they don't want that liability, so we have to house them the four to eight hours it takes to sober. Well, the state says, since they can't care for themselves, we have to put physical eyes on them every 15 minutes. So if we have someone in custody for drunk in public or DUI and we didn't have jailers, that would mean a cop off the street or the watch commander would have to sit in the jail cell and look at that person every 15 minutes and check on them, their well-being. And that would be a game changer for us if we had to do that. It would mean a lot of time away and we'll talk about that in a moment. The time away for detoxing would almost be six through three percent of a full-time equivalent of officer. That's what we'd lose a year. Running a jail is expensive. As you can see that our costs have, have increased over the years and our revenues have decreased. That is mostly due to the loss of the federal contact I mentioned before. Now, if you were here in February 2012, you heard interim chief Lumen give a presentation and his break-even number was 200,000. Well, that was based on the 2010, 2011 budget. I'm basing this on the 1415 and the 1516 budgets, which is significantly different. We have not added bodies, we've not changed our staffing models, we have not done anything but created new programs to generate revenue and we'll, we'll mention that in a minute. But no, that's the variance that you'll see from my numbers and his numbers. This year, real time, with 40%, or 44% of the budget a year expended, we've utilized 40% of our budget. So we are approximately 4% under budget. Additionally, our revenues are ahead of schedule where we anticipated being. So what potentially we looked at as being a 400,000 deficit will vent, we hope to be a $360,000 deficit in the difference between revenues and expenditures, or as I like to say, the cost of, the cost of operating the jail. So what else do we do creatively to enhance revenues? Well, jail staff and Sergeant Bowles personally goes and meets with judges, tell them about our great pay-to-stay program. They've met with the bar, attorneys groups, bar association, defense attorneys, public defenders. We have an online presence and advertise with the bar association itself. We are very proactive in our solicitation of pay-to-stays to help mitigate the cost as much as possible. One thing we did that we got way outside of the box, within the last 18 months, we had a major motion picture filmed in our jail. And because of that and some other opportunities, we raised about $47,000 in revenue offset. We are one of three jails in what they call the TMZ. Yes, like the movie or the TV series. It stands for the 30-mile zone. So what the film companies, film crews, scouts, they want something within that 30 miles of a designated spot somewhere in Hollywood that they don't have to pay per diem for you to go to. They just pay the straight salary and there's no added costs. So that makes us a very attractive place to film because we're within that 30 miles and we're all, one of three only jails. In additionally, we're advertising online at www.filmcalifornia.gov under cinnamon scout. And we are also listed under Film Long Beach. They've been very generous in listing our jail on their website because Long Beach does generate a lot of revenue with filming. So they have posted our jail as a great place to film because a lot of scouts go there. Another additional benefit of having the pay-to-stays and the long-term prisoners is I got a built-in work crew. They have painted the entire department inside. All it cost the city was the cost of paint. They have cleaned rain gutters, they do maintenance outside, they configure chairs, they're happy to get out of their jail cells supervised and do something and we utilize them for that all the time. They also clean their jail and repair all their own meals. If you go inside my jail, it is spotless. The brass is polished, floor is shined, that is all done by the inmates, saving us the cost of a cleaning company and them doing that or having an in-house employee do it. So now we're looking at 2015 numbers. Now, when you look at the cost, jail median cost, what we've done there is taken the median time of a booking or a transport or a drunken public arrest. So the range for drunken public, for example, is four to eight hours. So what I've done is taken the number of drunken public arrests, which is 329, or alcohol-related, did it by six hours and then that's the cost if we'd have to have a cop come off the street would be 168,000 or almost a full-time equivalent. We'd lose one officer off the street a year if they'd have to come in and sit with the intoxicated person, the arrestee. So those numbers are varying. I know a resident, Dr. Goldberg, submitted some numbers to you earlier today and that's where ours differ greatly. I'm not sure of his methodology, if he used the low end, the high end, the median end of calculating his hours, but for this purpose of this report, we are using the middle number in any given range. So looking at the cost for 2015, 2014, 15, we're looking at, it costs us $400,000 to operate the jail, above and beyond the revenues we brought in. So less than two officers or approximately two officers, but if you look at the, because an off, a loaded cost of a police officer is approximately $177,000. So why is this important? Well, it has been recommended by some that we should close the jail and just hire three more police officers or two more police officers because that would cover the time you see up here. Well, that would be the case if I was a 40-hour-a-week operation. Unfortunately or fortunately, my arrests, my detentions, my transports is 24/7, 365. So I cannot hire two officers to cover all ends of the week, 2400, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. I would have to hire approximately five because we're on a 3/12 schedule with, so that would be one officer each shift, both ends of the week, and then one floater to cover vacation, training, mandated training, all those things. And if we were to hire five more police officers to offset the cost of the jail, we're looking at close to $1 million. So that's how I would evaluate being able to close the jail and have no impact to the service of our community receives or affecting my priority one call time of three to three and a half minutes. So a cost of 400,000, hopefully this year we're looking at approximately 360,000 due to uptick in revenue and some salary savings from a vacancy, I think is a very reasonable cost to keep our cops on the street. So I hope you receive and file our report, my staff report, and we continue to operate our fully staffed jail with professionals that we have there today. Thank you and available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. I was going to ask you for your recommendation, but you gave it loud and clear, so I appreciate that. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few.
Councilman Miller?
Yeah. How many pay inmates do we have now on the inmate pay-to-stay program?
Sergeant Bowles, what is our current staffing level? I know we were talking about the potential of having 10 through the holidays.
Nine is at 3 o'clock, 3:00 this afternoon and about 12 awaiting intake.
So we have about 50% capacity?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have is, I was just curious, so how does a city like Los Alamos, how do they handle these drunks?
They will, well, Los Alamos currently books with us, so we will take some of their arrestees and the revenue that goes along with it.
Okay. I noticed you, you, I was looking more at the current budget year we had and it was going to be something like almost 900,000, is it? The budget estimate for expenditures this year?
The budget for the jail this year is 887,000.
For the, for the detention center?
Yeah. The current budget amount is 887,000, but I'm hoping to come in closer to 760.
And, and the revenue is going to be like 320,000 probably? I think that's what I saw in the budget. I don't think we, we don't know if we'll have any filming this year?
We haven't had any filming yet, but not for lack of trying.
And, and the other thing I noticed on the staff report, I don't know if it came from your department, but the salaries were lower than you indicated because I, I had done something similar to what Dr. Goldberg did and what we worked off of, I think he worked off, what I worked off is what Chief Lumen provided us in 2012.
That would be significantly different than-
Not the dollar amount, but that the, the actual numbers of, of people in the jail or number of arrests and such as that.
The numbers I utilize are based on an average of the last two years, so the numbers of arrests.
So it's updated. We have more, more than we used to have, huh?
Good.
Thank you. Okay, so these are, on page six, these are your current prices or costs excluding benefits or something probably?
The cost I'm working on for a load of cost for a police officer is currently, we'll get to that slide.
This one shows $85.20.
That is correct. $85.20 an hour with benefits and everything figured in.
So again, I, I originally, when I raised the question back at the budget time, we were looking at the 8, 88, excuse, $887,000 versus a revenue of 320,000. So it was about a $550,000 negative?
Our current revenue through the creation of sport is 167,832. Based on that, I'm hoping to make 393,660. If the trend continues in the year-to-date numbers, extrapolates for the rest of the year.
And it's off there now, but what was your- And it's off there now, but what was your cost to keep a, I think your cost to have an officer off the street, or the cost of, I don't know, the 300 and something now versus the 200 and something?
When we're calculating the hours and officers off the street, that is the cost of their salary-
The jail cost-
-removed from our community. The officers are realistically a fixed cost that we are already paying, so it's not an incurred new cost, it's just a loss of time on the street in service to the residents of Seal Beach. But we're trying to quantify it for you.
Have we given any thought to any way to streamline this a little more? I mean, if the 320 less the 500, excuse me, 880, it's like, again, there's still almost a half a million dollar, but it's not quite that, it's like $200,000 more than we used to look at roughly. Is there a point where we'll say that we're getting too high?
Of course, we'd constantly reevaluate and relook at how we are best business practice. An example of that is staff currently, or recently came to me and said, "Hey, we're not receiving enough booking revenues." I said, "Okay, what are we going to do about it?" So jail staff went to the finance department and said, "Will you conduct a study with us for best practice?" And because of this change in practice we're hoping to implement, utilizing state franchise tax board to receive some of these booking fees that we're currently not getting from the courts, we're hoping to generate another 60 to 100,000 a year when this program gets implemented, which we're hoping to do soon. So we're always looking for best practice, best staffing models, outside-the-box revenue generation, while allowing our patrol officers to be on the streets serving their community.
An unrelated question, just come to my mind. How are we doing on this special program where we're committing an officer, and we expect to get revenues off the efforts? I don't remember the name of the program.
That's the drug.
Yes. The DEA Task Force.
Yeah. How's that program coming?
The officer assigned to that and his team is doing a tremendous job of impacting regional narcotics enforcement, and as a side benefit to that, they're doing very well with asset seizures too. But once again, the reason we put them on there is to impact narcotics enforcements regionally.
I thought we also put them on there for revenue.
That is a very good side benefit, but we chase drugs to-
Have we received any revenue yet?
We have, if you want to talk the assets that they've, his team has seized, it's over $8 million year-to-date since the time we put them on.
And how much does the city receive back?
Very little. It takes a year to a year and a half for the city, for asset forfeiture, really a year to two years.
And how many years are we into the program?
We are less than a year, I believe.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mayor, that's all my questions.
Any other questions?
Is our jail ever full to 18?
It was when we had the federal prisoners, yes. But now with state pay-to-stay, it isn't. I'd like it to be, so if you know anybody that wants to stay at a jail, Seal Beach is a very nice place to stay.
[laughing]
$100 a night, $125 a night if you want work release with GPS monitoring.
Oh, I'll keep that in mind.
People seem to enjoy it during the open house, so.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mayor Protem Sloan, and then back to Councilman Miller.
Yeah, Chief, the misdemeanors, when they're arrested, do they all go into the jail and have to be monitored, or how does that work?
Unfortunately, the way it is now, misdemeanors come in, they're booked, they're processed, they're live-scanned fingerprints, their pictures taken. If they have any contraband, that contraband is seized from them, and now I'm speaking specifically to drug offenders. So if you're a drug addict, sir, and you come in, and I would take your heroin from you. Prior to Prop 47, a year ago in November, we then would transport you to county where you'd be held to arraignment if you couldn't make bail. Then they had this great program where they would hold the felony over your head and say, "But if you go into drug treatment, we'll help you out, and we won't book you for the felony, Mr. Drug Offender, Mr. Drug Addict." Unfortunately, post-Prop 47, almost every narcotics offense is a misdemeanor. So now we catch the bad guy with drugs in his pocket, we bring him to jail, we book him as we would, we take his contraband, because he's not allowed to have it still, and then we give him a ticket and put him back out on the street. And that, I believe, is driving our Part I crime increase, which is mostly in Seal Beach. It is an increase to thefts from vehicles and shoplifting, because the drug offenders and other people that may have been receiving service in jail are now forced back out on the street without their drugs, because I took them from them, and they steal to get more. But this is not a Seal Beach problem, this is a California law enforcement problem that we're dealing with, and I think you're going to see a significant Part I crime increase regionally, both in LA and Orange County at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Miller?
I just wanted to thank you for an outstanding police force. I would like to second what the resident said a few minutes ago. We have a great police force, and I think the community supports you, and I'm glad we all live in Seal Beach.
Thank you, sir. It's an honor and privilege for the men and women of the Seal Beach Police Department to serve in this community.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
None? Okay, I just want to ask you, Chief, on your additional benefits on the work performed by the inmates, did you factor any of that into your benefits as far as monetary would be if you had to go out and pay for that?
I did not. There is definitely a financial benefit to the city to have the entire station painted, to have-
That ain't cheap.
-the cleaning, to have all those things done that they do for us. I don't have a way to really quantify the cost this time, but I know it is significant.
I would say, looking at this, cleaning the roof, clearing the drains, preventing further damage to the roof, the painting, the maintenance, the leaf pickup, floor polishing, I mean, those are very expensive things to contract out for, so I think you might think about trying to quantify that, because I think there's great benefit there.
Thank you. For an example, just the other day, we had a pretty significant windstorm, and there's trash all over the place, so I just walked down and knocked on the jail door and said, "Grab some bags, let's put them to work," and they cleaned it up, look at he split.
Yeah, and it's good for them, too. I mean, it's really an advantage for them to be able to get out and get the exercise and everything.
It's part of the rehabilitation process, yes.
Well, I thank you for a very clear report and a clear recommendation. So with that, if I have a motion to receive and file?
So move. Second.
I have a second. Please vote. Thank you again, Chief.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
All right, now I'm going to move on to the items which have been removed from the consent calendar. We will begin with B, minutes of the regular city council meeting. I believe you wanted that pulled, Councilman Miller.
Yeah, I decided not to address it, so I move item B.
Okay. Do I have a second? Oh, wait, hold. Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Please vote. Okay, that's 5-0 to accept B. We will move on to G, the council chambers remodel project. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our Deputy Public Works Director, Michael Ho, will present this item to you tonight. Michael?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Tonight's agenda item G is to reject all bids for the council chambers remodel project. This project was to remodel the interior of this chambers, which included audiovisual upgrades, ADA improvements, repolstering the seats, ranging from security upgrades as well. Staff went out to bid on the project, and the bids came in significantly higher due to prevailing wages, labor and cost of materials, and the nature, the scope of work for the project. On September 16th, we received bids ranging from 900,000 over to almost $1 million. The budget that the city has budgeted was about 500,000 total, increasing the cost of over $400,000 for completing the project. At this time, staff has reviewed the project and considered maybe downscoping the project by delivering just five items, which is changing the project to just limit it to access, new access doors inside the chambers, one access door to the 8th Street, and one access to the patio, bulletproofing the existing dais, relocating the Seal Beach TV into the storage room upstairs in the chambers and remodel that room, modify the HVAC system in that room, and any abatement for any hazardous materials. At this time, the recommendation I'd like to read into the record, we would like, we recommend that the city council adopt Resolution 6611, approving plans and specifications for the council chambers remodel, project number BG1401, rejecting all bids, and lastly, authorized payment to integrated media systems for $10,737.50 for the council chambers remodel project BG1401. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, and I forget who pulled this. Councilman Miller?
Okay, so are we going, does this resolution cover the modified proposal for the modified council chamber modification?
That's the modification. That is the proposal.
Yeah, but I was just trying to read it the way they had it. Let's see. My concern is, I'd like to get this done, I guess that's where we're headed, but I started this effort back in March, and it's like, all I wanted was two doors, and so, for sure two doors as soon as possible. So what do we, do we think we're going to have a problem with this new bid, or?
Well, the resolution is to reject all bids, but it does not mention the new scope. But since we have the plans already, it's quicker for us to deliver the project based upon the existing plan.
Do we have to make ADA improvements just because we're doing this amount?
No, not to our understanding. We can double-check with our building official, but basically adding two access doors, we can double-check with him, but our understanding, no.
My concern is, we were going to have this done it right now, we weren't going to be here, we're going to be at Maga today, and it's a serious matter that needs to be addressed as quick as possible. I'd like to see it as a high priority. With that, I'll move the item.
Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you. That's 5-0 to reject the bid and go on out again, I guess, for our, under our new scope. All right, H, notice of completion for 8th Street Sewer Pump Station Project Number SS0901-3. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Tonight we have our Associate Engineer, David Spitz, to present this item to you tonight. David?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, and council members. The item before you is the notice of completion for the 8th Street Sewer Pump Station. A little bit of quick background, it is located at the intersection, or just at the base of the driveway from the intersection of 8th Street and Ocean in our 8th Street Beach parking lot. This sewer pump station takes sewer flows from our Gold Coast, all of Seal Way, the pier, the pier bathrooms, our lifeguard building, and the police substation in that area, and it pumps the sewage into our gravity system up in Old Town, which eventually we'll get to OCSD. The original sewer pump station was actually built back in the 1920s, so it's extremely old. There is a lot of deficiencies noticed, notified in our last sewer master plan, including difficult access in the hatches to get to equipment to maintain it, a wet well that had been slightly crumbling, we had an old dialer system, no new telemetry system or SCADA to get a notification out to our maintenance staff, there was no backup power associated with the pump station. So our sewer master plan identified a complete reconstruction of the sewer pump station. We awarded a construction contract to Charles King Company to rehabilitate that station. They have since completed that project, new items including all-new pumps, motors, a whole new constructed wet well, a new drywall vault for those motors and all the piping, new manholes and a new force main, along with new backup power and a new SCADA telemetry system, and all new electrical panels. We are asking at this time that the city council adopt Resolution 6612 to accept that project as complete, and to direct the city clerk to file a notice of completion with the Orange County Clerk Recorders. If anybody has any questions?
Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I pulled the item because, as I remember, we did the driveway and some of the remodeling there, is that going to be separated out and not charged to the sewer fund?
We actually had it charged. Part of the work for this project was to do a new force main on that driveway and to bring in natural gas to our new generator, so the entire driveway had to be ripped up and replaced as part of this project.
For this project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll move the item.
Please vote. Oh, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, please vote. That's 5-0 to receive, thank you. Item J, the West County Connector Project Post-Construction Freeway Noise Study, do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and again, our director, Deputy Director of Public Works, Michael Ho, will present this item tonight. Michael?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Tonight's agenda item J is to receive and file a noise study that was performed by Environmental Impact Science. This noise study was to verify the post-construction of OCTA's West County Connector Project. This project was the freeway connector for HOV between the 405 and the 605 freeway. Our staff worked with our consultant, and they performed the results, the study, in August of 2015. They placed noise receptors in eight locations, three in College Park East, two in College Park West, and three in Leisure World. The results came in, and we're happy to say that the freeway noise is compliant with the EIR that was projected by OCTA's project. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Councilmember Masal Abit?
I was reading the report, and I noticed the locations of the monitoring equipment, and it was all in the Leisure World part, it was all placed in Mutual 15 to the east of the Leisure World complex. There were no monitors in what I call Mutual 9, which is northwest of where the monitors were actually placed. And I think that is really the location where there is the most impact from an increase in noise level. What I think is, the noise that never had a wall to bounce off of is there with the bypass, overpass, and now, instead of that noise from the freeway going all the way across to Rossmore, it bounces off that hard wall and back into Leisure World. And I think there needs to be one or two monitors placed specifically in Mutual 9, because it is the closest to the freeway, and those readings be evaluated.
Just a quick backup and history with the environmental noise study. Our consultant did look at Leisure World and looked at the previous reports that OCTA and Caltrans performed. They picked strategic locations on where to place the receptors. There's a couple factors involved, like accessibility, permission from the homeowners or property owners, but these are something that we can look at and talk with the consultant to see how he feels about these specific locations for Mutual 9.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Michael, how do we deal with that? If that is done, will they do that as a continuation of the study? How would that work?
I can ask our consultant to see how to handle it and see his opinion on Mutual 9, to see if it's a strategic location, and if it was studied by Caltrans previously, and if it wasn't, that's the hard part, is because there's no baseline to measure-
Nothing to compare to.
Correct.
However, our noise ordinance, there would be something to compare to.
Exactly, exactly. So that way, we'd come back with some sort of professional opinion from our consultant.
Is there a way that this council can request that we just do that?
The action tonight is receive and file this, of this report.
And then, as part of-
Could give direction to staff to examine that location further with the consultant and make some future report to the council.
Okay, would that obviate the receive and file of this report, so that it can be blended into a new report?
If the staff and consultant determine that the report should be supplemented, they could supplement it, and if not, report back to the council one way or the other.
Well, if they decide that, no, it can't be supplemented, can't we just ask that a noise study be done? Because as she said, we do want to compare it for our own noise ordinance.
If that's the direction you want to give to staff.
Counselor?
What is the estimated cost or something like that? I'd like to see, you know, some numbers, instead of just going out there and doing some noise studies, if, you know, if it's warranted at all, because from the results- some noise studies, if, you know, if it's warranted at all, because from the results of these studies, it seems like everything's within the EIR, so I don't know what additional studies you're gonna do to offset this and, you know, go forward. I'm not sure what we're looking at. I mean, the baseline for, for this location may or may not be given at this time, right? So you have to go on the noise study from the city ordinance? What, what decibel level is that?
So, Madam Mayor, if I just, if I may interject?
Yes, thank you.
So, we can utilize the EIR numbers that they have in the general vicinity as a base for us to request an addendum to the receive and file of this staff report. So we can meet with the noise consultant, we can ask him to supplement the report that he presented with the new locations pursuant to the requests of the council member, and the baseline numbers that we can use can be the reflective of the numbers that are exercised in the EIR. They're reflective of the same, if they're within the threshold limits of a DBA of 82, that's what we'll use as our baseline. So it can be done if it is the desire of City Council.
All right, so I think Councilman Vera Papa's question is, though, what's the cost?
We don't know.
So if you could bring that back to us, and then we will continue to, to see if we can't help our Leisure World residents that are right off the freeway with no sound wall there.
We can bring you a scope of service that amends the existing contract with that cost, along with a staff report for recommendation.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to?
I have a question, yeah, one more question. Michael, what were the locations in College Park East? Were they right against the wall?
There are three locations in College Park East, I believe two of them were in Almond Park, and the third was near West, Westeria.
Where was the one near Westeria?
Make a correction, it's Blue Bell Park, 3651 Westeria Lane, and Almond Park.
361, is that, is that one that backs up right to the wall?
Correct.
So would we expect the noise right at the wall, or would we expect the noise back so many feet from the wall?
Well, it was in her rear backyard.
I think I know where you're talking about, so I.
Right.
I'm just wondering, is the noise further down the street more?
Almond Park, yeah.
No, typically, as you far, you travel farther away from the freeway, the decibel levels go lower.
Well, sometimes it seems like when you, you know, it seems like when you're right up at the wall, it's not as noisy as if you go like across the street a little ways, and the noise picks up for the noise that's coming over the wall, I guess?
I don't believe the receptor was at, or adjacent to the wall.
Where did Caltrans have it when they did their study?
It was typically in the same position as.
Right by the wall?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion, please.
A motion, we approve this item.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please vote. Okay, that's five zero to, is that a receive and file? Yes. All right, item K., El Nino Storm Preparation, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our Director of Community Development, Jim Basham, will present this item to you tonight. Jim?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you. So, we're all aware that the National Weather Organization is predicting El Nino this year. In anticipation that the El Nino is going to occur, staff has been very proactive. Not only have we met with outside agencies to see what their ideas are, we've met with our outside engineering firm, and also with staff in general. So you probably already have recognized the number of improvements that we've made on a proactive basis. For example, we've increased the berm height. It's basically twice as wide and as high, and the reason why we did that is because the El Nino, we predict, is going to be a lot of rain, it's gonna be a lot of erosion, it's gonna be a lot of high tides. We've already got a little flavor of that in the past several weeks, where the high tide, just on Seal Beach and Landing, from the covert box and at the Seal Beach Navy Station, that overflowed and it went into Seal Beach near Landing, but the national, the national, the rational flow of the water that leaves off of Seal Beach Boulevard drains into our inlet, so it takes time, typically an hour or two, in order for it to drain, but it does occur, and it does work. So the other ideas that we've presented and we've identified as proactive approaches are the pumps that you see that are strategically located throughout the community. So, and our staff determination and our strategy is that we identified, and we're experienced in regards to when it rains, we know where, what we call hotspots, so they're, in the drainage master plan, they're called sump locations, so they're the low areas of the city. We call them hotspots only because we identify them as quick rain locations where less than an hour of rain, these low spots will fill quickly. And these locations that we've identified and where the pumps are currently located, the streets are almost as level as the curb face, so when it rains, it's gonna flood quickly. So the pumps that we have in the location, the intention is to drain that water from those low spots, push it further down the street to the covert boxes or the inlets that we've already improved. That will allow the flow to continue on and to reach our west end pump station, just as an example where it relates to Coceire and Caravale. So at that location, there were improvements that were made to the storm box at that location. It does drain underneath the street, it does lead to our west end pump station, and then discharges into the San Gabel River. That is a natural flow of the water that's going to occur. That area, it's gonna take a while, just like any other of our locations, for we have collection of inlets, it takes time for it to drain, but that's a location for which we've made improvements already. We do have a pump that we consider mobile, so it is at the yard, and the purpose of that is because we have 39 locations in the city that are considered low points. We don't know how fast the rain is going to occur within any given hour, but we do wanna monitor locations, and if we know that there is a location where water is raising really fast, we need a pump that we can mobilize and put at a location. So I wouldn't suggest that we put a pump at Caravale and at Coceire, so if City Council is thinking of another cost for a pump, it's gonna be quite expensive. Just as well as you know what the recommendation is tonight, just for five months, for seven pumps is approximately $227,000. So on average, we're looking at each pump, just to have stationary and to sit, is approximately $6,500 a month for one, for each pump, with the accessories and for the hoses. So if we were to add an additional pump over and above the one they were keeping at the yard to be mobile, then you're increasing your cost probably about $262,000 for now eight pumps. So I would not recommend that we put that one in a location, but if it's the wishes of City Council, we can certainly entertain it. There are certain some other costs that we've incurred so far as our proactive approach. We certainly want to make sure we keep our outside engineering firm on board. They've been very helpful in helping us with suggestions as to how we're to strategize and combat the El Nino that's fast approaching. So there's additional costs that incurred just from erosion that we've noticed in Gun Grove Park. There was a lot of erosion that occurred just from the last rain that we had. So, I mean, the cost for us to clean up that area was $33,000, but we had to do it because we did not anticipate as to when the rain would come again, and it only makes the whole erosion issue more severe the longer we wait. So the cost that we have in front of you is a recommendation, not only to receive and file the staff report, but also to allow the city manager to continue and to execute the contract that we currently have identified in our recommendation, but also to cover the costs that we've incurred so far. So that concludes staff's presentation, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Yes, which, which engineering firm was that?
It's Moffett and Nichol.
Okay. We didn't have any input from our storm drain experts?
No, we didn't. Again, this is the meeting of our engineering staff and the locations for which we know are the low spots that are really going to fill quickly with rain.
Okay, and, and we're ready to, with regard to the Guava, excuse me, the Guava-Ironwood intersection, we're ready to try to make quick adjustments if we find that flooding?
Absolutely, and I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember. So the mobilization of having a pump that's available i, is a good location in College Park East. So College Park East has a flow issue, and we know the water doesn't drain very easily. In contrast to Coceire, where we made improvements at the location, so we know the water's going to flow in that direction, we know it's gonna have high spots, but it's going to drain because we made improvements. We don't have those improvements in College Park East. We're gonna need every manpower there is and every pump that's necessary and available in order for us to make sure that College Park East drains towards Old Ranch Country Club. So I, I think staff knows what they're doing in that regard, they're, they're engineers, we've, we strategized, we've, the best experience is field identification, and our field supervisors have identified where these low spots are, we know how quickly they can fill up, and it takes a lot of manpower for us to be out there and for us to pump that water out. So I think our proactive approach i, is certainly better than no approach, and this is something quick. If we were to, if we had the opportunity where we can strategize more in-depth with outside engineering assistance, then we would. But right now, we're relying upon our expertise that you certainly rely upon with staff, and we know where these low spots are, we know what happens very quickly, and, you know, it's our responsibility to push that water out as quickly as we can.
My other question is, why, why wasn't this brought to the council back in October for approval? Because it seems like it exceeds the $28,800 limit that the city manager has.
So, again, when we approved, just as, for example, the contract for the berm, we were still constantly meeting with our outside engineers and with staff, and understanding what other agencies are doing. So we're looking at an emergency situation, where we're acting upon when the equipment and when it's available. If we wait, the longer we wait, then we take an action for which we don't foresee as to what the climate is going to occur. And if we had rain and we didn't prepare ourselves, it could have flooded. 10th Street parking lot, we did have some ponding of, of water, and we created a retention basin that was part of the overall berm that was created with the machinery that was available, five feet deep, we created a retention area, and that water filled up in a matter of minutes. But we were able to drain it quickly, because we did act upon as quickly as possible based upon our experience, what needs to be done. And in this case here, we're thinking of the residences, we're thinking of the community as a whole, and under emergency operation, we will bring this back as quickly as we can to you with the identification of what these costs are. But this is not something that takes us six months for us to mobilize and to bring back to City Council that quickly. Emergencies don't occur like that, they're unanticipated.
Well, I, I saw that there was a letter dated October 2nd, and then I see the data, something dated in November, which is more current, and it said the original cost was $120,000. And so, when I look at those, I, I just would like to see things come to the council as soon as possible. I mean, you know, there was a, working off October 2nd, there was like 12, 10 days later, there was a council meeting, and I mean, if we can have an emergency meeting to bring a cottage down the street, we surely can have an emergency meeting if we have to to address the flooding, if, if it's that big of an emergency. I, I would just like to see us follow the procedures of this, of this city and, and have the right budget items come in in a timely manner. That's, that's the end of my comments.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please, City Manager. Just wanted to comment and follow up to Mr. Basham's comments, that it was staff's intent with this effort to be as proactive as we could, as we possibly could in order for our community to be prepped and ready to go for El Nino, with staff's understanding that under emergency conditions and preparation for emergency conditions, that we would set up a budget account to track those expenditures and then bring them to council for approval after a significant event. As the city manager, I did direct the staff, at least to this point, to bring those costs to you for approval, so that we can move ahead and be prepped and ready to go. So that was the intent with this item tonight.
I have a question, Jim. So the pumps, we have how many?
We have total seven.
And how much do they cost us a month?
For each, each unit is approximately $6,500 on average.
So how much is that for all of them per month?
It's approximately $45,000.
So this $229,000 is for how many months?
Five months.
And that is in arrears? Or is it going forward? I, I don't know where we are in this.
So that's going forward, so from now until hopefully through the rainy season, we're anticipating five months.
How much does it cost to purchase pumps?
Each pump is probably around $60,000 each, and one of the reasons why we needed to move fast or quickly, if you will, to get these pumps stationary is because I'm sure other communities have relatively the same ideas, because we all meet together.
Sure, yeah.
And the longer we wait, then we have no pumps.
Well, I'm just, the reason I ask is, it seems to me that this might be a budget item we should actually look at in purchasing, because we flood even when we don't rain.
Oh, absolutely. One of the things that our staff is doing, and especially around the clock, is we're gonna monitor the pumps, we're gonna activate them, we're gonna see how quickly they work, we're gonna see how successful they are. Again, keep in mind, this is something that we've taken, we've taken as a proactive approach in the past couple of months. I sat down with the staff, and I said, "We know what happens in the community, we know how quickly everything floods, let's make a change, let's do something to help the residences, let's do something to help eradicate what we're facing in catastrophic events." So we put our minds together, and this is what we come up with.
Well, I want you to know that the residents have noticed in my district, and they have said, "Thank you." They think it's their tax dollars protecting them, and they appreciate it, so, all right, anyone else?
Could I ask one more question? What's the impact on the budget? Are we now going negative, or is this coming out of reserves?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Miller, to answer your question, there is funding available in the capital program, that's why we set up the project and are charging it to capital, because there's a couple of projects that were eliminated after the CIP review was done, so there is sufficient funding in the capital program.
And what were those projects?
I'll have the engineering folks cover them tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's part of the project, but I believe it was the, there was a $400,000 project, Michael, for the, was it the backup power supply?
Correct, yeah, the project was to install a generator for City Hall and the Fire Station 44.
I'll wait till later to ask a question about that.
Yeah, yeah. All right, yes.
Yeah, Mayor, do you have a couple of questions? How were the seven or the six locations chose, chosen by the staff? Was it through the engineers at Moffett and Nichol's, or was it through, you know, historic data, or?
All of the above.
All of the above?
Yes, so we sat down in a room and with the field staff and with our engineers, and we identified what's called a hotspot. Hotspot meaning that what floods almost immediately, with, within less than an hour, the areas that flood immediately, that cause a tremendous impact to the businesses and also to the residences.
So the Marina site, Marina Drive location versus the Coceire location, did you look at both of those and determine that Marina was more likely to flood, or how, how did that go about?
So, yes, you're absolutely correct, because as you, as you're aware of, being an engineer, that the flow of the water comes in both directions off of Marina to this location, and then they travel down Caravale. That's the reason why we made the improvements at the end of Coceire, to accommodate that additional flow that's coming. It's gonna come regardless. That area is going to accept the water, it takes a while, and the more water that rushes to that area caused by the rain, it, it's gonna take a while, just like any other inlet.
Is the Coceire location lower than Marina Drive, location-wise?
Yes, it is, because the flow line, it, it will grade, and it flows into that direction, so that would be lower than.
Because we do have a history of flooding on Coceire, so I would think that, that would take into account your.
We have 39 locations, 39 locations that have sump issues, but I'm sure the city doesn't want us to spend 39 pumps. So we've had to pick the location that we know are critical, that are, that are mostly impacting in, in the community.
So the Marina Drive one could be relocated if needed, all of them, I guess?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. They, they're not embedded in the location, we put them in a location where we know we're gonna need to push that water, but if we need to mobilize them, we will, yeah.
Right, and then the, the stored one at the maintenance facility, how fast could that be mobilized if needed?
Immediately.
Like hours?
It's a matter of just, it's a matter of just putting it on one of our trailer of our vehicles and moving it to that location. I mean, the, the minutes, it depends on where in the city we want it to locate it. If it's around the block, then obviously with. If it's around the block, then obviously within five minutes. Further down the street, depending on if there's a lot of traffic or if it's a lot of rain or whatever the case may be, however long it takes us to get to any other part of the community, 15 minutes. But it takes us time, obviously with the manpower to hook up the hoses, right? And to then turn on a generator.
So, I guess the strategy back to Marina Drive was to put it where all the water's meeting, if you will, before it goes down to a lower point because more water comes down Marina Drive than Coase Air or Caravelle.
Yes. And one of the issues that we've been, we've had in the past is that apartment complex that right, that's right at the location was accepting a lot of the water. And the reason why is the property owner had a sump pump that was not.
Operating.
Yes. So, I sent my building staff to that location, issued them a notice to make a repair immediately. So, the property owner took care of that. So, that's going to help that apartment complex to drain that water out of that location.
Right. Well, I think, you know, through the history and just through people's concerns, you can see Coase Air has, you know, some issues. So, it'd be nice to keep an eye on that.
Absolutely. But Coase Air is not the only one. I just want the city council to know that. 39 locations in the city. And I only have so much staff, but I have, this year I have everyone mobilized, not just street workers. Everyone at the city yard be mobilized.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Could I ask one more question, please? With regard to the Guava and the idea we're going to pump down to the Elder intersection with Ironwood, do we have adequate hose already on hand for that?
Yes. And we have more, we have additional hoses that are part of what we required from the manufacturer. So, you know, we anticipate that that's going to occur. So, we studied that one.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Do I make a motion that we move this item?
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, that's 5-0 to receive and file. I believe that's what the motion is for. Adopting the resolution. Okay, I got to go back. You want to say it, Craig, for me?
It's to adopt Resolution 6615.
14?
Yes, 6614.
That's correct. There was a change in the agenda late into the day. That is 6614 is the.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, then, that's 5-0 to adopt Resolution Number 6614. And with that, we're going to take a brief 15-minute break and we'll be back. [laughter]
Jazz on the Latin side, right after this, on KJazz, 88.1.
Hi, this is Steve Tyrell. I hope you'll join me weeknights starting.
All right, thank you. We're back. And we're going to be moving on now. We have an examination of our CIP in totality and I'd like to turn it over now to our city manager, Jill Ingram.
Mayor, if I could just make a request of staff, since we have a consultant in the audience that's been waiting for item M as in Mariander New Business on the approval of the issuance of the special tax refunding bonds, if we could take item M before we do the CIP quarterly update, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, I don't know. I'll have to check with the attorney.
Okay with me, Mayor.
Okay, then it's okay with me. Okay, we're going to skip ahead to item M. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Thank you. Our finance director and city treasurer, Vicky Beetley, will present this item to you tonight. Vicky?
Thank you, city manager Ingram. Mayor, members of the council, tonight we have a sort of familiar face with us again, Anna Surabian, who's the senior vice president with the firm of Field Monroe App. They are the city's financial advisor. We're here tonight to ask for the authority to move forward with refunding the Pacific Gateway Community Facilities District. The bonds are originally set to expire and/or be finally paid in September of 2036, quite a ways away. And right now, the city has the opportunity to do a refunding of these bonds at a premium of 1% above par. Par is 100. So, in refunding these bonds now, we'll be paying 101 to the bondholders because it's in advance of the specified call date where it goes to par. But the city does have authority to do that. The bonds' interest rates range from 5% to 5.3%. And Pacific Gateway is actually the commercial district that's over by the police department where Boeing is. And so, there's 10 parcel owners that are going to be impacted by this refunding. By doing the refunding, we'll reduce, we won't, we will keep the maturity date the same. We will reduce the interest rates to between 2% and 4.125%, which on a net present value is a savings of 8%. And from a dollar perspective, the property owners will experience on average about a $60,000 savings in property tax each year. Now, similar to Heron Point as well, the uniqueness of this is that the city does not pay these taxes. The property taxes do not come to the city. The property taxes that are collected actually are used to pay the debt service on this particular issue. So, because of the success of the Heron Point refunding, the same team has been proposed to be kept in place. And there's a lot of additional information in the staff report, but essentially what I'd like to boil it down to is we're asking for the council tonight to approve a fiscal agent agreement, an escrow agreement, a bond purchase agreement, a preliminary official statement, a continuing disclosure agreement, a financial advisor professional services agreement, a continuing disclosure council professional services agreement, and a special tax council professional services agreement, and the Resolution Number 6615, which outlines all of the responsibilities for each of those agreements and contracts that I have referred to in this. And it's similar to all of the other agreements that the council authorized with the refunding of Heron Point. I know there's a lot of information here and I'm happy to answer any questions, as is Anna here from Field Monroe App. Anna, why don't you go ahead and step out to the podium just in case we'll be prepared? And I will, Anna or I are ready to answer any questions that the council might have.
I have one question. Does Pacific Gateway know about this?
No, not yet.
See, I think that is really exciting that you have watched out for our residents in, or businesses in this case, in this way, without them ever having come before you and asked you to do this. You've taken it upon yourself and I want to thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. And actually, I would push that right on over to our financial advisor firm. This is what they do to help cities like Seal Beach come to the aid of all of the constituents in the city and save money.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the team? Nope, seeing none. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. I should have moved you up a long time ago.
Oh, that's okay. I'm going to stay for the.
I know, we're always so much fun to see, I know.
A CIP presentation as well. Thank you.
Oh, you are? Okay, good. Thank you. You're welcome. All right. So, now, we need to.
Need a motion.
We need a motion to adopt Resolution 6615.
Second. Do I have a first? Oh. First. Second.
Please vote.
And Mayor, just for the record, that also includes approving the related documents that are also in your packet.
Yes. Okay, that is 5-0 to adopt Resolution 6615 and the related documents in the packet.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you both for watching out for our people. Thank you. All right, now we are going to move on to item L, Capital Improvement Projects Quarterly Workshop. Jill Ingram, city manager.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Tonight, we're bringing this item to you, which is an extremely comprehensive discussion on our CIP projects. And this is in follow-up to a previous discussion that the council had regarding the pier improvements. In addition to Councilwoman Sandra Masalavitz's request during the budget process to have quarterly project updates from our CIP. So, tonight, we have with us three of our finest engineers that are going to team up on this effort tonight.
Oh, and there they are.
Deputy Director of Public Works, Michael Ho, and our two associate engineers, Caesar Rangel and David Spitz. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Michael. And I know the direction of the council tonight is just to get through the presentation and we'll bring it back for council direction on priorities in January. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, city manager Ingram. I think Director Basham was wanting to kick it off really quick. He has a couple of opening remarks. Here you go.
Thank you. And you're right, city manager, we do have the finest of engineers here, including myself. What we're presenting to you tonight is.
Where did you get your engineering degree?
Oh, well, it was just recent.
L State, Long Beach.
Go Beach. We're presenting to you something that's a little bit different than when you received reviews of the capital improvement project. So, this is more comprehensive, as was stated, in that we're identifying each of your capital improvement project. We're identifying the funding mechanism and whether or not it is fully funded. If it is not a fully funded capital improvement project, then we are identifying the amount that needs to be funded. So, that's in your PowerPoint presentation. But let us get started in that we have basically categorized the capital improvement projects into three different areas. The first being high priority, then you have medium priority, and then you have low priority. So, high priority are going to be projects that are absolutely, we need to get done between now and 24 months. You have low, or the yellow represents medium priority. Those are projects that need to get done within three to six years. And then you have those projects that are low priority that are identified in green. Those projects can last or can be encumbered, if you will, or decided upon within seven to 10 years, if not a little bit later. But what's going to be important when we go through the presentation is that you will see at the end of each of these categories, we provide you with a summary that identifies just as an example, the high priority of those red projects that we believe we need to get done. It's going to show you in summary so that you can see overall the amount of that fund that's necessary for those projects and whether or not there's additional funding that we need to seek in order for these projects to get done within 24 months. So, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to turn it over to the deputy city public works director slash city engineer. And we're going to get started. How's that?
Thank you, Director Basham. Just a really quick reminder, we want to encourage feedback as we go along. So, this is a workshop. So, there's a lot of discussion points that we want to talk about and it'll roll into project priorities. We're going to go through each project in high priority and discuss a little bit more description, a little more in-depth about each project in high priority. Then we're going to go into the funding sources and shortly into the budget summary. And the last three options is the peer financing and then we'll go into Q and A. But feel free to stop us as long as we go. And we encourage feedback and things like that.
Stop number one, Michael. Are all these projects that are on this sheet, are they all in the current CIP?
We'll get into that. Yes, it is. So, that sheet I'll refer to a little bit later in the slideshow, in the presentation.
The slideshow.
At this point, I'm going to introduce Associate Engineer Spitz that will talk about this section of high priority projects.
Thank you, Michael. In true workshop fashion, we'll probably be passing this back and forth and all taking some discussion points. Can everybody hear me okay? The first group of high priority projects where we have identified are storm drain projects funded under the general fund. The first one you see here, SD 1601, is our West End Pump Station. It's the VFD electrical upgrades and sump pump improvements. This project is currently already been awarded. So, it's past design. It's in the beginning stages of construction phase. It has been fully funded under the general fund for $250,000. Second project you see here, SD 1602, is we titled 10th Street Parking Lot Sump Pump. Right now, where a couple of the temporary pumps are for the El Nino Prep at the 10th Street Parking Lot nearest to where the boardwalk intersects the parking lot, we will be taking this project and looking at permanent solutions for alleviating drainage at this area. This project is also funded under the current budget. So, at the end of every slide, we can ask if you have any questions. And if nothing, we can just move on to the next slide. Okay. Next slide.
I could ask my colleagues just to speak up if you have questions.
Yeah, feel free to interrupt me at any time if you want. This next slide talks about water capital funded projects. First project we have here, WT 0904, deals with the Beverly Manor Well and Booster Station Rehab. It's funded under water capital funds and part of the construction cost and full project cost is currently unfunded. The engineers estimate at this time is 5.2 million to complete this project.
Now, this isn't, that isn't the storage tank?
No, no. This is the booster station and the pump station that's adjacent to the reservoir. This project is on hold until the reservoir roof is completed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Next project, WT 1501, Water System Rate Update. This project is currently in design. We are, I believe, over halfway through determining our new rate study analysis. Funded under this current budget underwater capital funds. Next one, WT 1604. This one's identified as the Lamson Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. This project was, it's discussing the current water line that's on Lamson Avenue between Seal Beach Boulevard and Basswood. It is extremely old and. Seal Beach Boulevard and Basswood. It is extremely old in the terms of water piping life. We've had some breaks over the last couple of years. It's a, the type of pipe, we call it a mortar-lined spiraled spun steel pipe. I believe this one's a 12-inch pipe. And like I said, we had a couple of breaks and it's been identified as very high priority needing replacement. Currently, it is not included in our budget, so we have it as unfunded. Next one, WT sixteen oh five, Navy Reservoir Chlorination System Upgrades. There's been some problems over at the Navy Reservoir with, as you can tell, the chlorination system. It needs to be replaced. Original budget estimates were for only $25,000 for materials and it, since then, there's increase of cost and some possible needed engineering for there. So we have identified another 75,000 and unfunded for total 100,000. The next item, we actually don't even have a project number for it yet, but it's the Westminster Avenue Water Line Replacement. Again, this is another one of our mortar-lined spiraled steel pipes, extremely old. We've seen a number of water line breaks on that line and we've identified it as needing replacement. I believe the limits for this is where the terminus, where the pipe terminates roughly at Island Village and all the way to Road C on Westminster Avenue. And again, it's, it's not included in our current funding, so it's labeled under unfunded for 2.8 million.
Excuse me?
Yes.
If that line fails before we can replace it, who does it affect?
Well, currently, we have, we have what we call redundancy for almost all of our cities. So if it fails, it shouldn't put anybody out of service. We have a secondary line that would feed that area.
Okay.
Two questions I have. Wasn't there with the, the new pump station on Lamson, wasn't there a backup pipe we're supposed to still be putting in over there?
There, that will be a little bit later in this presentation, but yes.
Okay. Now, aren't these all water fund type projects? These are, these are, these are not general fund items or?
Nope. This slide is all water capital.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay. So what this impacts, there's water rates?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the last item on this slide, WT thirteen oh one, is Hellman Ranch Water Line Replacement Project. Just like the last two water lines I've mentioned before, this one is also a mortar-lined spiral spun steel pipe. This one's an 18-inch that runs from PCH and First Street through the, through the Los Ritos Wetlands Authority, the old Hellman Ranch property, and connects into our new 12-inch line at the Orange County Flood Control District's pump station. It's also in need of repair. It's had numerous breaks. We just fixed one and it's, it's also not currently identified under construction in our water capital budget, so we have it labeled under unfunded for 3 million.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
This says Hellman Ranch, but is it in the Los Ritos Wetlands?
Yeah, we've, we've always had the name of the project as the Hellman Ranch Water Line, but it is now, it is now in the Los Ritos Wetlands.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll move on to the next slide. This slide, funded under traffic impact fees, is ST twelve oh seven, Seal Beach Comprehensive Parking Management Plan. This one is already in construction. Part of it has been completed. The, the current, the current project that is out to construction is to update the data at, in communication lines for our pay stations at the beach parking lots, conduit and electrical lines for those. Anticipate construction in winter and spring when the new year turns. Next slide.
Could I ask a question about that?
Sure.
We know that's going to cause increased revenue, so we, do we consider that at all when we're talking about CIP cost on what we're going to recoup from that?
I, I don't believe revenues are...
No, Madam Mayor.
The answer to that would be no. Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right. On this next slide, high priority projects. Now, this is the first place we're bringing into discussion tonight on the pier because this goes under what we deemed as mandatory high priority repairs that need to happen to the pier no matter what happens at the end of the pier. We've labeled different funding sources for this item. Now, what is in, what entails under mandatory pier repairs are the fire water line that's out on the pier and mandatory structural improvements as identified by the COE report that recently came to council and certain improvements that were identified by Moffett Nickel for the end of the pier. The unfunded general fund are for those structural improvements. The water capital and unfunded underwater capital are for the fire line. In total, it would be 1.9 million of mandatory repairs out at our pier regardless of what the decision is for the end of the pier.
That's if we just put a cap on it and it's just the end of a pier. It's just a walking pier and fishing pier and...
These are items that need to happen regardless of just making the end of the pier open. There are other costs for making the end of the pier open as well that will be identified later in this report.
This include demolition and such?
No, no.
This only includes a fire line, dedicated fire line, and the general fund money is because we need to make repairs to the piles that are below the water area. So I cannot use water funds for that. But this has nothing to do with what we're putting on top, if we're going to tear down that building or anything. Those are optional issues that we discussed previously.
Is this the total structural repairs that we need to be doing at the...
That are mandatory, that we need to do, yes, quickly.
Will it support a restaurant?
Uh, no. We still have to make more improvements, but partially, partially, yes, but there's some other improvements that we need to make. Yes.
A question. So when you say unfunded general fund, basically, that's a million dollars out of reserves that we didn't plan on spending?
Yes, yes. And that's the result of what we've identified from Hurricane Marie. Yes.
All right, the next couple of slides I will turn over to Associate Engineer Caesar Rangel.
Thank you, Associate Engineer David Spitz. The next project in front of us, we have ST fourteen oh eight, Traffic Management Center Update. Basically, we got funding sources from the state gas tax and citywide grants which is part of OCTA grant we received. Currently, this project is in construction. In the construction, it states about synchronizing traffic signals on Seal Beach Boulevard and relocating our TMC into City Hall. If there are no questions, move forward.
I have a question. Where would you put it? The traffic management, that's all the lights on the board and...
Yes, it's basically all our CCTV, screen TVs. At this point, staff is looking to putting, or locating it where the currently CC, Seal Beach TV is located.
Oh, and it's being moved?
Yes.
All right.
Here in front of us, we got project ST sixteen ten, Westminster Avenue Rehab. This project is state gas tax, 200,000, Measure M two. We have 300,000 and then citywide grants for 500,000.
I might add a question. The water line, does that go through this new rehab project or how would that affect the upgrades to that street?
Uh, yes, the water line that we've discussed earlier, it does run through this area. City staff is going to work to accommodate both things.
So it behooves us to do the water line first, obviously, then, then the street?
That is correct. If there are no questions, I'll continue the next one. And Michael, Deputy Director of Public Works, will continue from here.
Thank you. The next slide is showing the sewer system rate study. Currently, we have a consultant on board which is NBS. NBS is currently proposing some rates for the city. They're on board right now evaluating our sewer and water rates. At this time, we're going to continue with the project and move forward with rates and come early next year, we'll do a workshop for our new proposed sewer and water rates. The next project is the Seal Beach TV Control Room Upgrades. This is the project that we are relocating Seal Beach TV from the current location to above the council chambers and remodel that room and some audiovisual upgrades as well for Seal Beach TV.
Michael, will this, will this marry in with the, the project that we approved earlier in the, in the evening?
Exactly, correct.
And so they can, they can be done at the same time?
Right. We'll tie both projects in together, which leads into the next slide, slide 12, which is the chambers remodel. So they'll both be constructed at the same time. Slide 13 is a summary of what we've heard from both David and Caesar. This is a combination of the projects that we have for the high priority summary. In total, it's about 17 million, but if we look at the area of the general fund, we're looking at unfunded over a million dollars. This is due to the fact for the pier. In this slide, it shows where we would like the majority of the money, 10 million, to be un, that's unfunded right now for the water capital. This is a, the series of projects that we discussed earlier that we felt that was very significant to start within zero to two years.
And, and Madam Mayor, if I can just interject, this is very important for us to realize. Water capital. So we're looking at expending over 13 million dollars that are required and mandatory structural-wise for our infrastructure from now and 24 months. So when we get towards the end of the slide, it's very important for us to remember these numbers and we'll summarize them again towards the end of the slide. This is going to impact our water fund, this number here, in two years. So this is the reason why we're making these presentations to you because city council has got to, has, we have to realize the amount of expenditure that's going to happen and so that we can strategically plan for these funding mechanisms so that we can deal with these projects in the increment timeframe for which we're establishing as high, medium, and low so that we are more prepared. Instead of it happening at the snap of a finger and then we're coming to you and saying, we have to increase rates. Sorry, it's going to occur next month. Oh, we're going to seriously be in jeopardy in regards to any type of additional catastrophic events that can occur. We're trying to strategically plan for what is necessary and this is critical.
Question then. So the 13 million dollars is coming out of the water fund, not the general fund, the general above the, that's the general fund. So those are different funding sources?
Yes.
Is there a way to, is there a way to get out of this without raising water rates?
So the finance director is more of an expert in that regard. We've had some conversations in regards to probably needing city council authorization to seek out funding mechanisms such as loans, long-term loans at, at low interest rates to pay for these projects.
Okay, thank you.
The next slide leads into the handout that I brought out. The medium priority projects, the majority of these projects are facility-related. So back in 2010, the city prepared a facility condition assessment which analyzed the city facilities, buildings, pier, the pier, the gates, Marina Center Park, the majority are facilities. They evaluated the facilities and came up with the dollar value for either replacement, remodel, upgrade, or complete renovation. So this slide 14 resembles the handout that I passed out earlier along with this presentation. It's the color handout that was adopted as part of the 2010 Facility Condition Assessment that prioritizes these projects for slide 14. These projects range from remodeling City Hall to renovating the city yard equipment carports to lifeguard garage remodel, a whole host of facility condition.
And this is important, Mayor, because this is unfunded 17 million dollars, general fund.
Don't we reach the end of general fund at some point?
I think we probably did. Yes, pretty close to it.
Okay.
So I'll turn it over to the next slide for Caesar.
Thank you, Deputy Director of Public Works, Michael Ho. This next slide, basically, we have in front of us are annual maintenance projects we do yearly based on our payment management report. What you have there is our annual slurry, concrete, striping, signage, and street resurfacing program. The, the budget usually right now is from state gas tax. The unfunded there that is basically what we typically budget every year in, in our budget for half of that. So typically, every year, we do about 100,000 in slurry, 50,000 in concrete, striping, we do 25, annual signage replacement 10,000 and 300,000 for locals resurfacing. So that all right now is, is funded through gas tax and at this point, it's based on our payment management report, as I mentioned, and our concrete citywide inspection report as well.
On the slurry seal as an example for sixteen oh one, you have unfunded 200,000, but we usually fund about, like you said, 140,000 or something like that?
Yeah, this, since we're doing year three to six, so this, this unfunded is, takes for one of those three years. So it comes out to 200,000 of one year and then another 100,000 for another year, totaling 300,000.
So it's really not unfunded, it's just the next three years?
Right, right, just the next three years. It's the...
So when you show unfunded, the money should be the, the next year and the next year?
It, it's what we'll do, yeah, what we put in our maintenance program typically every year.
I guess I don't, I don't consider, maybe I'm getting caught up on the accounting, but I don't consider that unfunded. It's just you're, you're looking beyond one year. I mean, it goes on and on. And our slurry seal projects, as I know it, are up, we're up, we got all our, we're up on our current schedule, I think.
But it's just that right now, at this point, we, we haven't budgeted for it in our budget book. That's the reason why we have it as unfunded.
So as you update the CIP next year, less will be unfunded and more will be, okay.
That is correct.
Yes, and you're right. And so long as every year we receive that amount of money for state gas tax, then it will be, it will continuously be funded. The more important of this slide, importance of this slide is that this is not coming from general fund. Right. So we, we will expend whatever we receive in state gas tax. That's how much we'll spend every year. And this is what we anticipate. Yes, okay.
I'm, I'm just saying though that we're not really unfunded. I mean, it's just, if we weren't getting that money, probably wouldn't slurry seal that year.
Absolutely. So it's not guaranteed. That's why we consider it, for the purposes of the slide itself, it's not funded because we can't project, we can project, I'm sorry, but it's not there. Okay.
All right.
The next slide is another one of our maintenance resurfacing projects local. This one is Measure M two funded and as before, the 550,000 is basically half for one year and another year as discussed earlier.
You know what, what I'm trying to say is it kind of misrepresents it when you look at it. It's, I mean, it's not like we...
Maybe what you'd like to see there is a to be funded.
I don't know, but it's not like we, we have a, a major pier project we have to do and there's really an unfunded amount of money to accomplish that. In this case, we call it unfunded, but it's, we anticipate it's being funded by another source. So I'm, I'm starting to worry we're going to mix apples and oranges before we...
Could it be asterisk or something?
No. So once we, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Once we get to slide 21, we'll give you a better understanding as to allocation of the funds still.
Got ahead of ourselves.
Yes, yes, just a, just a little.
Moving on to the next one. This project here is a WT sixteen oh seven, Seventh Street Alley Rehabilitation Project. As you could see, we have 160,000 funded through sewer capital and 160,000 through water capital. This project will upgrade our sewer and water lines for the Seventh Street Alley along with resurfacing our concrete, a brand-new concrete alley there. Any other questions?
How long?
Is there any question?
How long is that alley?
I would say probably around 300, 300, 300 to 400 feet, linear feet.
And it's only going to cost 320,000?
Yes.
Okay. Concrete?
Concrete, yes.
What are the cross streets? New, new water line in there also?
New water line and new sewer.
What are the cross streets? What are the cross streets?
This project's between, uh, cross streets, electric to PCH.
I believe that's the alley Joyce is always talking about.
I was thinking that, I didn't want to say it.
Yeah, yeah. It is.
Okay.
If there are any further questions, I'll pass it along to Associate David Spitz.
Thanks Caesar. Jumping to the next slide, we're going into sewer capital projects. Two, two projects mentioned here under medium priority for sewer capital, we have SS thirteen oh one, which is Sewer System Master Plan Update. This project is, it's kind of a four-parter. It's to update our sewer system master plan, just like water master plans and storm drain master plans. We update or try to update them about every ten years or so. It's, it's been ten years since our sewer system master plan has been updated. This project will also include our sewer system management plan. It would include doing our biannual sewer system management plan audit as required by the state, and we would update our sewer system overflow emergency response plan. So that's all currently under that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is budgeted currently under our sewer capital funding. And the second project listed here, SS seventeen oh two, annual sewer lining program. We, we, under our sewer master plan, there are many locations that are identified that, like many locations of sewers, that are in, in fair shape that before they become critical would need lining. And we, we are anticipating a maintenance program for attacking some of those locations on a yearly, on a yearly basis. So that three hundred thousand represents, our, our medium priority would be years three through six. So this is a program we intend to, would like to start.
I have a question.
Sure.
I know I, I probably don't understand these priorities as well as you do, but it seems to me that it, it might be a better thing to fund this sewer lining program rather than the master plan update. So why have we funded one, a study, rather than what we actually do?
Well, parts of the, that item are, are required, because we, we are running into the deadline of needing to redo some of these updates, like our biannually sewer system management plan audit. But as far as the, the, the big-ticket item in that one, the sewer system master plan, it's been ten years since our last one. And our, 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 our history has been about every ten years, we redo our master plans to help identify any deficiencies that our systems are now seeing within the last ten years. New uses, there's new commercial, new construction somehow going in some certain areas. So we want to identify that and the flows that go into certain pump stations, and if they deteriorated or, you know, in ten years, a lot of new technologies come out, we might need to upgrade electrical or mechanical sections to our pump stations, things like that. So we are looking to redo our master plan as it is currently ten years old.
Okay, so we consider a master plan a higher priority than, than the lining program?
We consider them under this, this, this workshop both medium. It's just the master plan has already been budgeted. We have already requested for that one.
I see. Thank you.
Okay, on the next slide, this goes back to water capital projects. I know we talked about some under high priorities. Those are very critical, as Director Jim has mentioned. These are still critical, but they are not completely necessary to be done within the next twenty-four months, as he's outlined. These are projects that are needed to be funded within about three to six years, or three to seven years, I think, is our, our timeline. The first one, WT sixteen oh two, Leisure World Well Improvements. This project, Leisure World Well was first built back in sixty-two. I won't go in too much into it, but there's been some upgrades over the years, and I believe the last upgrades that that well has seen were right around the year two thousand, two thousand, or mid-two thousands, I believe. And some of the items are deficient. There's some old telemetry, old computer systems, old motors and old pumps that need to be replaced, entire refurbishment project. Sixteen oh three talks about the Bolsachica Well. We have now pretty much talked about all four of our wells, or three out of our four wells in the town. This one was built in seventy-nine. The last time it saw any kind of refurbishment was, I believe, back in two thousand and five, or one of the natural gas engines needed to be rebuilt. The last time the electric motor was worked on was back in nineteen ninety-five. This is up until the, up until the Lamson Well was put online. This has been kind of one of our workhorse wells, and it's, it's, it's been stressed over the years and it's, it's needing some improvements. And the money we have set aside, six hundred thousand dollars was previously budgeted for this project, but it, it, it needs approximately a million dollars for the current estimates. So six hundred thousand has been budgeted and the other four hundred thousand, we consider unfunded. And the last item on this page, West Orange County Water Line Extension. The West Orange County Water Line will, well, needs to be extended to facilitate the four or five improvements and the different cities that are, make up the, I guess the owners for that line are all going to have to pitch in their share to construct the new improvements there.
What about the, what about the water lines that are coming across the four oh five by Leisure World? That may be by, for, by a different way, but have we accounted for them here in case we have to pay for them?
Um, I, I believe that's still in negotiations with OCTA and Caltrans on the cost.
My point is, that may not happen. We may have to pay for it. Have we figured out, shouldn't that be on the sheet? We may or may not pay.
I, I guess the answer is correct. We may or may not pay. I, I believe the latest indications were they would be covered by OCTA.
Okay, if you think they're going to be covered by-
And then, and then some of our water lines, in the current alignment, they're okay.
Okay.
And then the next one, the next slide talks about a local coastal plan. And, and I, I, I don't believe, well, it's, it's budgeted currently eighty thousand under sewer and eighty thousand under our water capitals to make up the hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Is that all appropriately to be covered by those two funds?
I believe so, yes.
I believe we have another eighty thousand from general fund, so it should be about two thirty?
Why would sewer and water pay for the local coastal plan?
Um, I think, I'm assuming this has been in the, in the budget for a number of years. I gather, because some of it has, is tied in with the nexus of improvements that are required, if you're in the local coastal plan, that will be identified to justify the use of the funds. Any project permitting that involve infrastructure, like for example, the Hellman Ranch Water Line right now requires a coastal development permit. If we had our own LCP, it wouldn't have to. We would basically be self-certifying.
Okay, thank you. Well, also, since the boundary, the, the Coastal Commission is Westminster Avenue, there's a lot of water and sewer lines between the ocean and Westminster Avenue that certainly could justify the inclusion of funds from those, include, include money from those funds.
Include, but not totally be funded from those?
No, it's, I don't think it's going to be total. It can't be. It's going to cost a hundred, more than a hundred and sixty thousand.
I, I think it's probably close to the two hundred thousand dollars that we anticipate with environmental-
For the LCP?
Yes.
How much did Newport pay for their LCP?
I don't know, because it has to do with the geographical area as well. The cost exceeds, obviously greater if a consultant has more work to do.
I think it was a lot more.
Yeah, I'm sure it was, yeah, yeah.
Since you're almost done, did you get to the Lamson Water Line yet? That was, well, that was part of the original station. When they did the, when they did the new pump on Lamson, they were supposed to-
Correct. We, we haven't gotten to that line yet in our workshop.
The funds were already set aside for that, right?
Correct. It is currently budgeted.
Okay.
On this next slide, I guess I'll keep going. Similar to, as Deputy Director Michael Ho had discussed with our high priority projects, we took this time to summarize the medium priority projects, those for years three through seven. And as, as Director Jim Bashan mentioned earlier, there are more than one funding source. There's a couple of them listed here that, that discuss how we wanted to fund all the projects in the medium priority. There's general fund, state gas tax, Measure M two for a lot of our paving projects, sewer capital and water capital. So the, the things to notice here, like under general, that's seventeen million, as Deputy Director Michael Ho mentioned earlier, is mostly for facilities improvements to both city, city-owned buildings, parks, beach-related items, things to that nature. And then the, the other big ticket here is the one point five million for unfunded water capital items. And, and again, as Director Jim Bashan mentioned earlier, we're going to, at the very end, bring all of this together to show you after we've gone through all the priority levels. Okay, I'll keep going. This next slide, now we're into our lower priorities. What, how we identify the lower priorities are projects that we have identified that need to be done. These are, these are projects that we think should be completed, you know, after all the high and medium, probably seven-plus years down the road. So some of, and, and even, even if we identified them as thinking they need to be completed after seven years, some of them may still be budgeted currently. It's, it's up to discretion of the council if we continue or we push them off. The first two listed here under sewer are annual sewer manhole rehabilitation program, and the other one is the sewer system smart manhole covers. The manhole rehabilitation program was intended to use that fund to replace broken, cracked manhole covers throughout the city on a per-annual basis. And then the other project is, there was a, we're going to go in through a pilot program to change a couple manhole covers for smart manhole covers, which are better used to detect the possibility of sewer overflows. If, if you have a hotspot in your sewer system, install one of these covers and it can detect if the levels are rising too much, so you can proactively fight before you get a sewer system overflow. This next slide, going back into water projects. And this, this first one, eleven oh three, is the project you were talking about earlier, which is the Lamson Water Well Connection Improvements. Back when we built the Lamson Avenue Well, the original plan's called for connections onto Lamson Avenue, headed westerly towards, towards Candleberry, and actually towards Basswood, and then easterly towards Heather and connect into the city's water systems, both areas for redundancy. At the time, due to a couple reasons, one being cost, only one of those lines was installed, and currently there's still just the one line installed, the one that heads towards Basswood. The one that heads towards Heather is this program identified right here.
And it's, and it's underfunded?
Um, correct, correct. Current engineers' estimates have it as underfunded.
Okay. I thought we had the funds for it back when we did the well.
I, I, I believe with, with some of the items that came up, unexpected costs, this was one of the items that they removed to stay within the budget at the time.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll, we'll go quicker through the, the lower priority projects. But the next one is fifteen oh two Anaheim Bay Water Sewer Improve, Water System Improvements. I apologize. This would be rehabbing our water lines in the Anaheim Bay currently. Next one, College Park West Water Rehabilitation. This, I believe, would be a line that would connect from College Park Drive into Long Beach for redundancy into that neighborhood. And a couple others, WT fifteen oh four, Citywide Water Meter Replacement Study, fifty thousand dollars is currently budgeted. Sixteen oh six is Water Valve Replacement Program. This was more of a maintenance program where fifty thousand is currently budgeted and like to keep that as a maintenance program for replacing old water valves that need to be replaced. It might be in our, in the ground for fifty, sixty, seventy years, some of them, and are, are currently not closing really well. And the last item, seventeen oh one, was identified for, you know, years in the future, which are just for miscellaneous water system improvements to our infrastructure, as identified in our water master plan. I've talked for a while. I'm going to pass this back to Deputy Director Michael Ho.
Thank you. Just to speed things up a little bit, just to run through the, the rest of the low priority projects. These projects are various number of projects that range from like the pool to ADA upgrades to city buildings, things like that for the rest of the slides for low priority projects. Just one that we want to highlight, the first one, which is the new swimming pool, for four point eight million. That is a funded project using general funds. Keep in mind, this low priority is just basically a priority system that it's not required, it's not mandated. It's, it's not an emergency. It's not something that we classified as a high priority. This is just a low priority project that can be built at a later date, but it is funded.
Better not wait too long.
We'll spend it.
Yeah, that's true, too.
So on the next slide, it continues on with more unfunded projects. Typically, these are used for general fund. This is something that hasn't been funded, but these are a little bit of ongoing projects that we created a list for that, that was been heard by either the community or council or driven by other requirements. But the, the main thing to point out is it does use general fund. There's no other funding source that we can find or, or locate that can fund these projects for. Next slide twenty-six is a wrap-up of, of kind of these types of projects for buildings and facilities that was primarily identified in the two thousand and ten.
Yeah, I know, because I look at that tennis center and, and we're doing a study of the tennis center now and, you know, redoing the clubhouse would be nicely, just kill the termites.
Keeping your walls up.
Oh, that may be true. Termite stuff.
Something really to point out, we like to show is slide, on this slide twenty-six, is the ninety million that's part of the storm drain master plan projects. This is the storm drain master plan that was adopted in two thousand and eight. It identified over ninety million dollars in storm drain improvements. So at the end of the summary, you'll see a bulk of it from that, which is the storm drain projects. And next, I'll turn it over to Caesar.
So here in front of us, we got the ST fifteen oh eight. Basically, this is to do any signage improvements that we need throughout the city as, as needed basis that we probably find out through our maintenance department. At this time, we have a hundred thousand budgeted under state gas tax. Moving on, here's a citywide, there's no project number, but citywide, the street paving rehabilitation. Unfunded, we have eighteen million at this point. Basically, if the council requests, we would move forward to redo all the, all our pavement drainage report, all the slurry seal, all the resurfacing needed at this point. We would need eighteen million. Move, moving on. ST fifteen oh nine Westminster Avenue Medium Improvements. Currently, we have two hundred thousand community facility district. Budgeted, unfunded, we have fifty thousand, twenty, two hundred, two hundred and fifty. This project will redo the landscaping along Westminster Avenue median between West City Limits and Sil Beach Boulevard. Right now, it's currently in our five-year CIP. This, as Associate Engineer David Spitz and Public Works Director, Deputy Michael Ho has mentioned before, this is a summary of all the low priority projects. Here's something we want to point out under general fund. The bulk of it is going to be storm drain and facilities improvements that are needed. You got the Measure M two, which is the eighteen million for resurfacing. But I guess, yeah, you could see the general fund really impacts storm drains and facilities at the time. I'll turn it over to Deputy Director Public Works, Michael Ho.
Okay, so this is pretty much in the conclusion of this entire summary report. What does this table tell us? This table basically gives us a full scenario of where the funds are needed and what, what type of projects are, are generating for what type of funding source. So in review of this slide, the first column is funded. This is the amount of projects that we have in our adopted budget. We have over fourteen million budgeted for these types of projects. The next column is the unfunded. This is the portion that we've identified projects that have no funding source yet or doesn't have any type of funding associated for each project. The next column will be the total, basically a summary of both the funded and unfunded total for, for each of these projects. And lastly is the ending fund balance. This is a table that we- This is a table that we created, that we like to put next to each funding source, that shows what's our current ending fund balance, which is per our adopted budget book. So for example, the first row, we have general funds. We have a little over 7 million funded for projects, but we actually need 142 million, a total of 149. How much ending fund balance do we have? Per the budget book is a little over 8 million. So we can see the shortfall for these projects itself. Can the 8 million fund the 7 million? Sure, but I don't think we want to put all our eggs in one basket, so to speak, for, for these projects. So this column kind of just shows and indicates where the real need is.
Michael, I have a question on that, if you don't mind. I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm really confused here. On the general fund, you say we have 7 million funded, and we have an end fund balance of 8 million. So that 8 million is what we have today in our hand?
Correct. Per the budget book, that's the ending fund balance of our general funds.
As of today, that's what we have in our hand. And we funded 7 million, so what we're saying is, all we have left is a million dollars?
No, we have an additional 8 million. The 7 million is already accounted for. The 8 million ending fund balance is what we have left over.
After we spend that 7 million?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the same principle as you go down to each funding source. So the two things that we want to highlight is the general fund, and also the water capital. The water capital, we need 21 million, and ending fund balance is 15.
Now, that 15 is after you spend 5. The 5 that are funded.
Correct.
Will leave us with 15.
So...
Does that leave us with 15, or are you just saying, you have a surplus of 15 million there?
Correct, but unfunded projects, we, we need 16 million.
So in other words, we don't have enough money in water?
Pretty close.
If we understand.
Well, this is primarily in two years.
Okay.
Yeah. So between now, so, so in other words, we could, because the majority of that water fund would be expended anywhere between, it could be in six months, and we will have no more water funds. So that's important for, for the city council to understand, is the reason why we need to explore and be able to come back through the direction of city council, funding mechanisms to fund these projects on a long-term basis. Otherwise, you have no water in your, in your water fund.
Printer.
A printer? Oh.
A printer.
To print the money?
Yeah.
So the majority of the, the money that's coming out of general fund is under your, your category of, of yellow and green, meaning that if you do not want to fund improvements made to all of our facilities, then 17 million dollars within three to six years does not have to be expended. But if it is our goal to, and I will recommend, in regards to the facility assessment that was done several years ago, is for staff to provide you with a more higher priority understanding as to what facilities are on the verge of collapsing, of falling, under what disrepair of significance. I don't know if that facility plan that was prepared was that comprehensive. So I would like to go back and reanalyze that to determine the severity of what is absolutely necessary, that that facility master plan showed that was 17 million dollars that needed to be encumbered. But currently, what's more important for us to assess and for us to determine, and to continue to work quickly, is water capital. Either we take a look at a long-term loan to pay for the water projects between now and, and two years, or we have some real serious rate increases that will need to be discussed.
Jim, why are our estimates so far off?
So, a lot of these studies that were done were several years ago, and when the studies were done in them, in those master plans, they identified construction costs. What they don't identify is the increment increases that occur from that point forward, and they're basically three, three elements or items. It's labor, materials, prevailing wage. Prevailing wage is your strongest amount that hits you, and that could be, that could be about 32% of a construction cost for any line item. So that's why your numbers are so different, if you will, or skewed. So what we're bringing to you are the true numbers in that regard, up to date, including those three line items: labor cost, the increment increases over 2% over each year for labor material, and factor then prevailing wage.
When did prevailing wage go in?
That probably would be a good question to the city attorney.
When did, when did we become obligated to pay prevailing wage?
I thought it was a recent court case.
It was three, I think it was three years ago? Two or three years ago.
Okay, so that, that automatically then jumped, what, by all of our labor costs by 30%, did you say?
Estimated, it's about 32, 33% for prevailing wage only. And depending on when that study was, was prepared, you know, you're adding about 2% increase in labor, 2% increase now in construction and material.
Any other questions? Are we ready to go to the next slide, then?
Okay. Slide 32, so going back to the original kind of intent, why do we do this report? Why do we summarize all these projects? Was kind of circle back to the pier. And back in October, we presented some numbers and figures for different options of how the pier was gonna play out, either an open deck, one-story, or second-story. So these numbers have changed slightly to incorporate those COE numbers, prevailing wage, and material, and labor cost.
Michael, have you combined both of the previous presentations on the pier into one now, so that we're looking at everything?
Correct. Slide 32 is now the most up-to-date current figures for which option, option we have.
Does, when you have the second one, there were pier with one-story building, that didn't have to be added to anything, that is the cost, total.
2.4.
Yeah.
Plus the mandatory repairs.
Wait a minute, that's what I was worried about. Where, where's that on this list?
Those mandatory repairs we have under the hyphen.
Shouldn't, shouldn't you add that to this list, so we can really see what we're looking at?
Well, one can be made without the other.
Yeah, exactly. These are options.
We don't have to do this at all.
No, that's why it's options.
It's just nice to see it, so we can really see everything that goes into the pier, but you're right, it's already done, right? Was it a million?
1.9 million.
1.9.
So you can just add 1.9 million to, to each of these columns, if, if you like.
Just add 2 million.
So it's four and a half, roughly four and a half million to put a one-story restaurant?
Yes, yes, yes. But remember, the, the whole segue, as mentioned, is, this is where we started. We started here, where your council's asked for staff to bring back real numbers. And then once we did that, we sat down, we said, we need to bring all real numbers for everything, not just this line item, because we were ready to encumber the cost for these options. And then that's when staff said, well, let's think about all the other ones that we need to bring to you, too.
And with one-story building, that doesn't mean the building, that just means it functionally is ready to have somebody build a building.
Right, right. That, that'll be a whole different cost that's negotiated with the city and any long-term tenant.
So what do we get for 1.9?
What you get is a new fire line, which is very important for us to do almost immediately, because I just had a break in that line not too long ago, and it, it cost us $6,000, but it's cracking, it's corroding, and it's a matter of time before we're gonna have to spend that money immediately. The other part is the, there are some piles that are embedded below the sea level that require some wrapping. In order for us to do that, that's another 900,000. And then we have 100,000 in some costs that are required for site bracing, and some damage that was done from Hurricane Marie that's just below the surface of the deck.
So that still doesn't get the fence open?
No, ma'am.
Okay, off-topic, I had a resident ask me the other day, why can't we open the gates during the day and lock them at night?
So, the end of the pier, well, we'll need to make those improvements, for sure, but there's a lot of hazard, hazard cleaning that we're gonna need to do because of the bird droppings. We did board up the structure itself. It becomes an issue for which, for the police department, I don't want to speak unnecessarily on behalf of the police chief, but we can't see what goes on behind that building unless it's being monitored on a daily basis. Because when the restaurant was open, it was okay to have people behind the building. They were, it was open to the public, the restaurant was open. Now that it's closed, other activities can occur behind there. And it, and there were activities occurring behind there before we decided to close the gate.
During the day or at night?
Yes, during the day.
All right, thank you.
We could always use our drone for surveillance.
Joe Bailey, can I have your drone?
I don't think the police department has a drone.
I was talking about the one we don't have.
All right, so now, do we go on to financing?
Yes, ma'am. And I would, I would humbly defer this to the expert, which is the city treasurer.
Thank you, engineers of various titles. It's been very, very well presented, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, I'm between you and the last item on the agenda, so I won't take very much time, but one of the reasons why Anna stayed tonight was just to hear this presentation, because as indicated previously, one of the options is some kind of financing. But before I talk about that, Mayor, you had asked a question about slide 13, about the, the general fund impacts, or, or not the general fund impacts, but you'd asked about the revenue potential when we change out the data.
Yeah.
And power. So one of the things that you have to keep in mind is, when we can, we will charge the project to Tidlans, as we can. However, Tidlans is typically subsidized by the general fund, so we generally transfer money from the general fund to the Tidlans funds each year. So to answer your question about some of these projects, we could offset potentially some of this cost by increasing the parking fees in those particular lots. It won't generate a lot, but it's a way to offset some of the cost. The other thing that I would like to point out is, as we move forward in this process, there have been some funds that have been designated, set aside as part of the general fund. For example, we have Storm Drain Designated Fund, and there's approximately $400,000. And that $400,000 has been sitting in this specific designated fund for quite some time. As we start moving forward, we may want to consider finally spending those monies that have been sitting in those designated funds to help cover the cost of some of these projects. And lastly, we could spend a lot of time talking about what some of the other options are. We have a financial advisor who is very well-versed in the area, but suffice it to say, debt service is the best option for us, for the longer-term projects especially, because typically, they have a life cycle of greater than 30 years, which in finance speak is a generation. And so if we're going to have infrastructure improvements in place that we are going to anticipate lasting longer than 30 years, it makes sense for each generation to continue paying for that infrastructure improvement, rather than the city doing pay-go right now and having all of the current ratepayers pay for those improvements. One of the things that engineering does phenomenally well is go after money, wherever money is available through grants, OCTA and other grants, and in fact, the, the, the new program, the V program that they mentioned today, we had already discussed that as one of the options for doing some funding. So where we can, we would look for grants. The city has also done very well with the State Water Resources Control Board getting low-interest-rate loans for some of the projects. So we would work with the financial advisor to come up with the best plan. The real challenge, and we have an engineer sitting on our council, and we have several engineers, what typically happens is, we put a project on the books, we say the project is gonna start X, and rarely does the project ever start X, and rarely does it ever finish within a scope of time. And the challenge with debt service is, we have a limited time for meeting the spending requirements. That being said, we can identify projects that we want to do in three years. We could bundle all of those projects together through the good graces of our financial advisor, they would go out to the market and sell that. And then we would be locked into a timeframe for getting those projects done. But that's how we, I think we would best approach, and we would mitigate some of the rate increases that this presentation shows you that we're very clearly gonna need, especially in the water, in the water area, because those are the key infrastructures.
And we just finished with all those water rates. We were being increased every year, and then all of a sudden, we got those done with, and now we're turning around and looking at water rate increases again, so.
Well, actually, Mayor, it has been three years since we've had a water rate increase.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but we had years where we were paying them down, then we got rid of them, and now we're looking to do it again.
Right, right. Well, and one of the other things that is coming up with this study is, excuse me, one of the things that council had asked us to do is look at actually setting reserves in place, so that we have money set aside for those projects as they come up. And so this new rate study will actually include a reserve study as well, and that will have an impact on, on the rates more than just the cost of operations.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So are we gonna get more in-depth with recommendations on what kind of financing for which projects, and when would that be?
Well, and I defer probably to the planning to the engineering department, but once we get to a place where we are ready for the council to prioritize, and the council to tell us to move forward on those specific projects, that's when we would bring the financial advisor in, and we would sit down and have a workshop to discuss with council, council what the options are, so we have a very clear direction from, from the point of financing. And that way, then the financial advisor would be able to go out and take a look at what the options are and come back.
You know, I, I think it would be really helpful if we could do another umbrella approach, only do it on financing, because as I look at all of this, and I think, oh my gosh, well, you know, what are the options to pay for this, or to pay for that? And I don't really have a good feeling on it. I mean, I know that we need our reserves in this town, and we, we, we need to keep good fiscal management and so forth, so I'm looking at, at very scary numbers, wondering what's the best way to deal with this. And so I think an umbrella approach where, you know, here, for this, these might be your options, and this might be your options over here, so that we can kind of get a handle on, okay, they're scary numbers, but here are our options, and this is the way we can think about it to get out, and, and take really good care of our infrastructure. And Jill, you mentioned something today called an asset management. What, what, could you expand on that?
Yes, so essentially, what it is, is taking all the information that the engineers have put together, there is, for, a firm, or firms out there that will help us look at the asset management, do a condition assessment, and come up with a way to actually prioritize the projects more effectively. They would look at the probability of failure and the cost of the failure. And looking at those two components, then, would, they would prioritize the projects that are identified here in a completely different way, that brings it totally into a more financial realm. So you look at the condition assessment, you engage the public in looking at those numbers, and then taking that condition assessment, what it really does is provide the engineers with a very good roadmap of what needs to be done more urgently than others, and not saying that the view that they, that they took isn't the best. others, and not saying that the view that they took isn't the best view. It is the best view, given what we know. But when you take a look at the two different functions of that component, what you'll see is, okay, all these are red because there's a probability of failure. And then, they'll overlay the cost, and when they overlay the cost of failure with the probability of failure, all of those reds suddenly disappear or change color to yellow because we're making a risk-based decision. If it's going to cost us 500,000 to fix it, or it might only cost us 100,000 if it fails right now, then you kind of add weight to each of those components, and you can really make a better risk-based decision about how to move forward with the infrastructure repairs or replacements.
And that actually might be an effort that the council may choose to undertake in the future. But staff's effort tonight was just to give you a snapshot and a true and accurate reflection of where our infrastructure needs are citywide, and prioritize them based on our engineers' expertise, as well as update what we have had in our CIP program, updated construction costs, so as items come forward, specifically the pier, you know specifically what those needs are and what options are for financing moving forward. But the asset management option might be something that you might want to consider in the future as we move ahead.
No, I really appreciate your doing this. I think it has really helped us to take a sober look at it, and I'm glad that Gary suggested that we not act on it tonight, and we take it home, and we digest it, and we think about it, and come back. Will this be on the website for the public to view?
If that's your direction, we can upload it as part of the council's agenda tonight. And Mayor, I'd also, I touched on it briefly in introducing the item, but really want to give kudos to our team, our staff team, because this was an unbelievable, labor-intensive effort to bring this review to you tonight, and to our engineers especially that were overseeing. This wasn't something that was on our work plan. This is something that they did above and beyond as they were also overseeing some major capital projects over the last few months. I want to say thank you to Jim, and Michael, and Caesar, and David, and especially David and Caesar, this is, I believe, only their second time presenting at a council meeting, so you guys did a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, with that, then, are we done for the evening?
No.
No.
Shoot.
One more.
Okay, oh, okay, well, this is the next thing, then, but are we done with this item? Yes, okay. Then, we're going to move on to Ann, which is the reorganization, which is the selection of the new mayor and new mayor pro temp for next year, and I would like to hand this over to our attorney to run, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The nomination period is open now for nominees to serve as mayor for the next year.
I nominate Sandra Masalavat.
That doesn't need a second, does it? If it does, I'll second it.
It doesn't need a second. Are there any further nominations? And the nominations would be closed, and council members, please vote.
Do you vote, no?
No. That's 5-0 for Councilmember Sandra Masalavat to be mayor for 2016. Congratulations, Sandra.
And now, the nomination period would be open for the position of mayor pro temp.
I would like to nominate Councilman Vera Poppa for mayor pro temp.
Are there any further nominations? Nominations would be closed, please vote.
And that's 5-0 for Councilman Vera Poppa to be mayor pro temp.
Thank you.
And I know you will both do an excellent job, and it is my pleasure to be going back and sitting in a seat that isn't quite so hot. So, with that...
I'm sure there'll be a time when this can be more formal, but I also want to thank Hillary Dethan for being such a fine mayor, and I can tell you, she's going to be a tough act to follow, but I know you can do it, Sandra.
Thank you, David. All right, any other comments before we close? I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. Sandra, are we still in Hanukkah?
I don't know.
Okay, well...
Still haven't finished last night.
Happy Hanukkah and Happy New Year, and we will all see you in 2016.